Good evening, everybody. I'm calling you to order the Spokane City Council Legislative Session for December 12th. If you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Fister, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers DePone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, I'm not sure, is Kendra Egley here? Kendra?
She is our poet for the night, but I don't see her. So hopefully, another time, she will read "South of the City Limits." We don't have any proclamations or salutations. We are going to have an administrative report and a chance for questions and answers regarding the Trent Cannon Shelter and the transition. And I'm going to invite up City Administrator Johnny Perkins to lead a team of several speakers.
Thank you, Council President, members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. Good evening, Merry Christmas, and Happy Holidays. Tonight, joining me, behind me over my left shoulder, from the Salvation Army is Major Ken Perrine, David Kaufman, Cassandra Cram, from our Fire Department, Fire Chief Brian Schaefer, Fire Marshal Lance Dahl, from our Community and Economic Development Department, Director Steve McDonald, our Building Official Dermot Murphy, and our Director of Park and Code Enforcement, Luis Garcia. And finally, the team of, from Neighborhood Housing and Human Services, Kim McCollum, our new director, Eric Finch, who continues to serve multiple roles here in our city, including IT, among others, and our Chief Financial Officer. This evening, we wanted to give you an overview of the operations at both the Trent Resource Assistance Center and Cannon, and answer a couple of other questions. But I wanted to start off briefly to say, the Salvation Army is at the midpoint of a 90-day review to identify any changes, needed to bring operations in line with their standards and practices. And as you recall, we were here in October, where we discussed having them come back, and the council's request was, could we have them come back prior to the 90 days concluding? So here tonight is Major Ken Perrine, to give you that 45-day update, actually, I think in his presentation, he'll speak to 42 days, that they've actually been on the job, and how the operational transition has progressed thus far. We also have with us, as I mentioned, our city's building official, Dermot Murphy, Fire Marshal Lance Dahl. Those gentlemen will present a brief presentation, Mr. Murphy will, on the Certificate of Occupancy, and to answer any questions on the temporary certificate of occupancy. They will be here to do that. The Salvation Army assumed the contract from the previous provider, as briefed to this council in October. They started those operations on November 1st, the day after Halloween. Their immediate focus has been on caring for those staying at both the Trent Resource Assistance Center and the Cannon Shelters, and transitioning employees who moved from their previous provider to the Salvation Army during this period. And Major Ken will go over the number of employees that they've actually retained and are continuing to work for Salvation Army from the past provider. I have let the council president know that the Salvation Army will complete their review and be prepared to have more detailed discussions after the holidays, once everyone has a full picture of any long-term operational updates. With that, it's my pleasure to introduce Major Ken Perrine from the Salvation Army.
Thank you, Johnny Perkins, and thank you, Council President and City Council. So I have the picture up to the first one, that's where the tables are, and behind them, you can see the wood beds. So we're going to get back to that in just a second. There you go. Just so you know, in the 42 days since we've opened, we've served, we've had actually 10,598 bed nights, and over 31,794 meals. In a Cannon, 3,300 bed nights and over 10,080 meals. So it's a lot of food being served. I'd like to talk about what went well. We made minimal changes initially to the shelter layout. We wanted to keep the kind of trauma of the change as minimal as possible. We added a resource trailer, a space for outside providers to interact with the guests, so more people can come to the guests rather than trying to ship them all over town. We've added storage containers, so people come, we can actually, they get one tote, and they can put the extra stuff out of the storage area. Health and safety, we've provided a space for isolation and quarantine. We're still working on getting that done, and then we've added an office trailer, because there wasn't enough office space. We were able to keep 40-plus of the staff, they stayed on with us, and hired 74, with the goal to hit the goal of 350 guests. We're implementing policies and procedures for the guests. We also have uniform training, so that, not the guests, the staff, for staff expectations, procedures, that's as started. Just want to make sure that our staff are treating the guests that we have like guests, and treat them like human beings, and that we help them to help move forward in their life. We've implemented all training for staff, CMIS, CPR First Aid, Right Response, which is de-escalation, peer support, manager training, driver training, and bloodborne pathogens. These are just normal things you have to deal with when you're working in a shelter environment. It's hard to judge how guest morale went, but I would say that the number of people immediately jumped from 160 average per night to over 250 per night in the first week that we took over. I don't know if that's a good judge for morale, but I would say more people came. So, food, the food contract rolled out quickly, and the type of food and the quantity of food increased significantly, so that's been helpful for them. We've been talking to the guests about entering stabilization, or some kind of drug and alcohol treatment, we were able to get some into that. I would say that partnering with the city during the transition has also gone well, so we do want to thank Johnny Perkins and his team for that. Currently being addressed, we put that under different sections, but the first one's property. Currently, we're using portable sinks near the bathroom, so we all know it's cold outside, so they've been freezing, so that's been an issue. A solution is being implemented to impact that. The person we're working with is trying to come up with a way to keep the tanks heated. Showers, there's access to hot water if the guests take showers. They also have a place inside the shower unit for them to wash their hands, and there's another shower unit coming that has more sinks for that. The issue right now is maintenance is a little bit hard, because the shower unit, the city shower unit's not designed for cold weather, but there's a solution coming for that. Hand-wash stations are moved inside, and they operate room temperature. And again, with the number of people you have in, it takes, we're constantly emptying those. Parking is a big issue, because we have staff, we have revised staff, and then we have the guests that are staying with us, their vehicles. An issue that we're having right now is we have to come up with a plan, so that we can allow the Fire Department truck to do its special turn it does. So we're working on that, we're still working that through. Just a reminder, we won't be there for 42 days, but we're just trying to work out the kinks. One of the issues has been media interest has been high, and so we're continuing to approve the notification process for that, so get, let people know what's going on, while maintaining a safe environment for the guests. Consumable supplies, this is big, people probably don't realize how much that many people use in a week. Over 7,000 cups you're using a week, and over 4,000 plates, so that's a lot. A dedicated dish room capable of washing that would actually save quite a bit of money, but right now, this is where we're operating. And as always, Salvation Army, we want to do everything to best quality for the best price, and so this is one of those easy fixes, save some money. Transportation, because of the location, we're giving out a lot of bus passes to get the guests to different types of activities, whether it be a job, or medical appointment, or a provider appointment, also for laundry. We give them a bus pass and a laundry card, so they can go out and get some laundry, because there's currently no laundry on site. We've had a high amount of 911 medical calls, we're still trying to figure out the plan to how to mitigate that with the Fire Department. Some of the things the Fire Department gets called on is, as they would say, I don't want to speak for them, but there may not be Fire Department-type of activity, so. Upcoming highlights, there's 350 metal beds and partitions, they arrive on December 19th, and we hope to have them all in place by the, within three days. That's pretty aggressive, but I think we can do that. We have tables and chairs for 200 have arrived, and they actually have carts, so we can quickly pick everything up and clean the floors a lot easier every day. It'll be less labor-intensive. There's a drawing of the current layout as of next week, and those are the beds, and I'll talk about the beds in just a moment, but that's where the layout is. We have the intake, hand-washing stations next to where the food is, and then, we actually went with all-round, so the lawn tables don't really make sense, but we have a changing area, which is a small little, is there a mouse? No? There's little boxes over to the right, there's a changing area and comfort area, and then there's an isolation and quarantine area, and then this is the beds. And the beds are set up in four-person, I'll explain the bed in a second. So you see these metal, you see the beds, and there's these metal things between them, those are the dividers, and actually, these ones are sitting on the floor, the ones we purchased actually bolt to the bed, so they sit about three and a half feet above the bed, so they actually provide a good separation between the beds. The beds are set up in a four-person pod, or whatever you want to call it, living space. It provides more than six feet of space for COVID distancing, and this space meets the Salvation Army requirement of 50 square foot per person in a sheltering environment, and it exceeds the FEMA emergency sheltering requirement of 40 square foot per person. The red bars are the spacers between the bed, and the bars at the top are semi-walls that, again, are four-foot pony wall to allow for greater separation. So it does allow each little section to be in a smaller environment for folks, and it also allows a better management for people. Eventually, you'd like to have power at each bedside, again, that helps with people management. The Cannon Shelter, the beds that were currently in there, they're not designed for adults, they're bunk beds, designed for teens, and if you Google that bed, it's, you'll find the maximum weight rating is 220 pounds, and we have people above 300 pounds in there that are breaking the beds. I put an arrow down to where the part that fails each time, so we've been getting replacement beds, but they keep breaking, because there's a person in there. So we would recommend that we actually eventually move to the beds we bought at Trent, which can handle a weight load of up to 400 pounds. And I think that's it for me. I'm going to turn back over to Johnny.
And we'll do Q and A in a little bit, but we'll go through your first round.
Thank you, Council President. So briefly, Building Official Dermot Murphy will walk through the temporary certificate of occupancy and those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Council President Beggs, council members. So how many occupants can be safely accommodated at the Trent Shelter?
Can you come a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So that's been a great question for the last couple of weeks on everybody's mind, is the amount of occupants at this shelter. Building statistics, Trent Shelter floor area is 31,200 square feet, with an office area on the north side of 2,354 square feet. The original layout, with the 250 occupant load submitted by the guardians, and that's all we were asked to do, can this facility hold 250 people? The answer was yes, and a temporary certificate of occupancy was issued in September 1st. So what is the maximum occupant load of this facility? In front of us, we have the IBC tables. On the left, you see assembly without fixed seats, concentrated, which is chairs only, standing space, and unconcentrated tables and chairs, in other words, loosely, not fixed. And the business area, concentrated business area uses 150 gross per occupant. The office area is 2,354 square feet, with an occupant load of 16 occupants. There is an exception that allows you to use 50 square feet per person, and that would max out the occupant load to 47 occupants for the business area. Facility itself, so if we look at chairs only, we can go to 4,457 occupants. If I'm looking at standing space, I can also assume 6,240 occupants. Tables and chairs, I can go to 2,080 occupants. So these are the IBC tables. What they don't address is a bed layout, okay? I just wanted to make, or get that across. To use that, we use FEMA's document P785, which gives us guidance on shelters. You've seen the disasters across the country, the stadiums with the beds and so forth, this is the document that they use for that, and the document that we will be using. So with the Trent facility at 31,200 square feet, we can go for a maximum occupants of 780 occupants with beds. Remember, that's wall-to-wall. The revised shelter layout for 350 occupants by the Salvation Army, you see that the beds are to the, north is to the left, so you see all the beds laid out there, that's 17,500 square feet, and the additional floor area of, I think it's 13,200 square feet, there about, allow for communal gatherings. With the revised layout of Trent Shelter, Salvation Army provides 50 square feet per person, FEMA recommends 40, so the occupants have an additional 10 square feet. And the revised bed layout uses 17,500 square feet of floor space for the occupants, as I was saying, 13,700 for the common area. That doesn't address the exiting. So the maximum occupant load for this facility is determined by the number of exits, that's the most restrictive part of this building. How do we safely maneuver these people out of these areas? We have four exit doors. These are 36 inches wide, and they calculate out to 172 occupants each, which gives us a grand total of 688 occupants. So I'm saying, the city of Spokane can't flex in an emergency situation from the 375 that was requested by the Salvation Army, up to 688. Thank you.
Right, Council President, members of the City Council, that concludes our presentation, and we have staff here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yep, let's pick one person, and then we'll ask all the questions for that person, and then go on to someone else. So who has a question for anyone? Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm asking for building capacity, so if we surge up to, if we surge up to 688 people, what other amenities would have to be on that site? How many more bathrooms would have, would have to be available, or washing stations?
That hasn't been taken into consideration at the time, I'm just giving you that number, that's what's feasible.
Okay.
Right now, Salvation Army has 350, and they meet all the code requirements for bathing facilities, the bathrooms, the showers, and so forth. To go to the 688, they would also have to possibly look at staffing, take that into consideration, and then additional facilities to address those occupants.
Councilmember, actually, I'll go with Cathcart, and then Stratton.
Just a quick follow-up on that, I have a different question I'll ask after they get a chance to go, but is this accounting for the outdoor space, and kind of what would be feasible if you're considering some sort of pallet shelter, tiny home-type situation on the outdoor space?
Having considered the outdoor space, right now, we're looking at the internal facility itself, not the outdoor.
Okay. Councilmember Stratton.
So, I don't know who said it, but there's been a high amount of 911 calls. I'm just curious if we can get some kind of idea of some of the subjects of those 911 calls, and then who?
So before, I'm just going to interrupt slightly, so what I'm looking for is any questions for Dermot first, and then we'll rotate, so hang on to that. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. So Dermot, what was that per-square-foot number that you gave us? One person gets how many square feet?
50, according to the Salvation Army. FEMA recommends 40.
40. So is that per, that square-foot number for the 688 people, or for the 375 people?
That is, the 688 is the maximum amount of people that you could put on the inside of that building.
And still maintain your 50 square feet?
No.
Okay.
That's for the doors, right?
It was just for the exits.
Yeah.
The 688 was just the exits.
That would cause a revision. You would lose, there would be a dramatic reduction in common space if we were, if we were to go to wall-to-wall beds.
Essentially, we'd be, they'd be like cordwood in there.
So I'll be.
Okay.
Jailhouse.
Yeah, thank you.
Guess members DePone.
Yeah, on those four exits, is that including the office space in the front?
Correct.
So how many are in the back part of where people are sleeping? How many doors are back there?
There are, I think 25 in the admin side.
There's three doors in the warehouse.
Oh, sorry.
Three in the warehouse, and one in the.
Yeah, there's three doors in the warehouse, and one through the office.
Okay, so is that a factor of consideration, how many people can stay in the back part? Because I imagine it's difficult to exit.
So we're taking them all into consideration, we also have travel distance to consider, since the building is on sprinkled at this time, we can only use 75 feet to the exit. If it was sprinkled, they could have 150 feet.
So do the, because I did, I saw some reporting somewhere about how far, does the current situation meet our standards on that, or is that someone from the Fire Department's going to answer that?
So the current situation doesn't meet our standards.
It does, okay.
With the increase in the occupant load of 375, 350 guests and 25 staff.
Other questions for Mr. Murphy?
I'll drop a comment, and if you did 40 per square foot, or 40 square foot per person, you're at 780 that can be in there, would be the, that would be wall-to-wall beds, be 780.
So I could probably answer that question for you. If you use the same layout as Salvation Army, 17,000, 17,500 square feet for the 350 beds, if you were to reduce that down to 40 square feet, you would have a positive gain of 87 beds.
Because you're distinguishing, you're talking about the whole 31,000.
31,200, yeah.
He's talking about the 17,000.
Right.
So it's different.
I'm trying not to lose that common area.
I hear you.
Guess members DePone.
Yeah, the question I guess have is, for the FEMA requirements of the 40 square feet, do they set guidelines for about how long people are expected to be living in those conditions? Is it, at FEMA, it's emergency temporary.
Correct.
And this is not temporary?
I hope it is.
I mean, people are going to be there for longer than a week, as a natural disaster.
Other questions for Mr. Murphy? All right, we'll let you sit down, don't go far.
Thank you.
Can I just point out one thing? Thank you, Dermot. These are just maximum occupants, this isn't what we're planning to do, this isn't any type of design or forethought to put 688 occupants there, this is just what the maximum load of the facility would, would hold. Just so, we just wanted to clarify and get that information brought forward, so it would be available to you to ask him questions.
Guess member Kinnear.
So, Mr. Perkins, we're going to be dipping into single digits, starting tomorrow, I think, and so wouldn't that be the time to plan to get people out of the single digits into shelter?
Yes.
And flex that space to the higher number?
Yes, it would be, at that time. I'll let Major Ken address that, what their plan is going forward.
Okay.
Well, just hang on for one second, you have a question for Mr. Perkins?
Well, it was about bathrooms.
Okay, go ahead.
So I guess, what is the minimum required number of bathrooms?
All right, we're into Major Perrine, go ahead.
Sorry, I can go twice if you want. So the WAC is 1 to 15 for showers and toilets, so it does not stipulate if they have to be, you know, hooked up to hot water, or not, just, it just says, and that's also the same standard that's used for disasters too, for FEMA. And then, Councilmember Kinnear, you were asking about the flex space, we're going into the zero temperatures.
Yes, yes.
So we're not 100% ready to go right to 350 at this point, just simply because the way the building is currently laid out, the wood beds take up a lot more space, and there's only 243, what's the number? 245 of the wood beds right now. We have 100 mats, so we are taking people in, but because the way the building is currently laid out, it would be very difficult for us to get people in there in a safe environment, so if there was an emergency, people could exit. That's why we want to go to this other plan, which is hard to, it's not there now, but there's actually ways to egress both, each row, from either the top or the bottom, so it allows for a lot more, a greater, safer environment for folks. So I hope that answers your question.
Kind of, but we still have all these people that are.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Guess member Bingle.
So, two quick things. Number one, there's a volunteer opportunity next week, correct, to help put beds together?
Yes, there is, but that would be a Todd Milky question, he's not here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the second one would be, we're in an emergency situation, folks are coming to track, we don't have mats, we don't have beds, and we don't want to turn them away. What do we do in that situation?
So currently, we have 245 beds, and then we have about 100 mats, so we are taking people in and putting them on mats on the floor, so we are taking them in, it's just, there's a lot more people out there than I think people realize, so if they all showed up at Trent, that just would not work. But the ones that make it there, we make sure that they have a nice, safe place to sleep for the evening, and get them a blanket, and hopefully, a shower the next day.
Guess member Cathcart.
Yeah, just wondering, I know there's been conversation in the past around strategizing between Cannon and Track, and seeing if we can kind of, you know, put certain people who might need more help, less help, in one or the other, and really just kind of organizing that better. Has there been any work yet on that front? I know we're in the midst of an emergency situation, a lot of things, but just wondering kind of what that looks like, and you had mentioned, which kind of spurred this, the beds, particularly at Cannon, and it just got me thinking, you know, wouldn't there be some economies of scale if we could just get all the beds at once, for both, and, you know, kind of just do everything kind of similar, so.
It's true. Actually, we have a really good relationship with the bed manufacturer, so we get. Actually, we have a really good relationship with the bed manufacturer, so we get like really good pricing on that, because we buy them across the entire nation, they get them from him. So, we can always order beds anytime, and in fact, they made a special deal to get the beds here faster. So, some other Salvation Army out there is not getting their beds, because we got them. So, but the good news is, is that eventually, we can buy those beds for there. We've been talking to the city about possibilities for how to better use Cannon, because the bed count there, there's no communal space there. It's, they have people sleeping in the communal space. So, we are having those conversations. We're not far enough along to actually give a report on that yet, but because we do see that we have people that have mobility issues, and if they were in a different spot, they might have a greater, a faster turnaround than if they're here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. So, what is your capacity or your plan for staffing for the surge capacity, knowing that employees are hard to find right now, especially during the holiday season?
That's a great question. You know, for staffing, our ratio is 1 to 25. That's what we try to get to all the time. And so, right now, we hired, we just hired 74 additional people to be ready to hit this number next week, and we're very close to being at the right staffing level for everything. It is difficult to find some good quality folks to be able to work with, folks, work with this crowd, so I think we're, I think we're gonna be okay. The, as for the size, this is a good size, a good layout, because it allows for a place for people to sleep, and even hang on their bed, but also provides congregate space, so they can be doing other things, they can meet with folks, and we actually have a trailer for them to meet with providers. And so, it's a good combination of the two types of space. We have, we will be talking about how to get more power to the beds, we have to figure that out, so that'll actually help with the people management. I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Okay.
And your food service, their ability to expand their capacity?
I think they'll be okay, because we have a contract for them for 250, and they know that we have to be able to surge to 350, and they have the capability of doing that. And not all the folks, at the moment, we're trying to make sure we can watch waste at the same time, because even at 250, not all 250 people eat. So, if we're averaging, we're trying to figure out where are we averaging, so we can be buying food for that. So, if we're averaging 200, then we only want to be buying meals for maybe like 220 or something, so that we can lower the cost.
Last question. So, Major, I just, someone was just sharing today, do we have a signed contract with the Salvation Army to do this work?
I'm gonna, we're working on that, and Eric Finch is gonna talk about that.
So, we're in the day 42.
Yes, so there's been, right now, the Cannon one is in the signature process. I think we just got it back to the clerk's office today or Friday, and Track should be, I think, fully done by tomorrow. The, I have to own 10 days of the delay, because I've been out with the flu. You know, that's been part of it. The time previous to that, there was a good, about, you know, week and a half, two weeks of back and forth between our legal side and the Salvation Army legal side. And what was found through the initial contracts that we put together for that late October briefing was, there was some corrections that needed to be made, and these were truly corrections. They didn't change the term, the scope, or anything else, but they referenced like, you know, a HUD CFR, because, you know, some of the prior thing had HUD funding, where this did not. And so, those things just needed to kind of be, needed to be corrected. And so, that's been what, you know, some of the administrative delays.
So, Eric, while you're there, you know, we were asked, and we approved, a scope of work for 250 people, and suddenly, I'm hearing 350 as like, that's the contract we're negotiating. I'd heard from Administrator Perkins that we don't have the money for 250, or beyond 250, we're gonna have to get it from somebody else. So, I'm just curious, the jump, if there is a jump, because we only authorized the 250, so how is that gonna come back to us to discuss?
Yeah, and I'll start, and then I'll turn it back to Johnny. Going back and telling you, that late October briefing that did with you, it was for the 250, and that's, you know, what the contract signature process will be for. The additional scope and the growth that's seen needed, and whether it's related to the winter conditions that were, you know, let's face it, I mean, the past 30 days has been usually like January has been, in terms of snowfall or otherwise. So, it's been a little bit more of a difficult circumstance this November than in past years, or in relation to additional, you know, guests we might get from the DOT camp. Both those things have started making us look at that surge plan. That would be part of an amendment that would be brought forward, with what that would look like, and what that would cost, and how we would do that, and why we think that would be a good thing to do as we go through this process. So, I'll start with that, and then the city administrator can...
Now, I have a question that's applicable.
Well, go ahead and ask your question, get it out there, and then...
What question? And it might be Major that has to answer this. What about recre, is there room for recreational activities, or are we looking into recreational activities, something for people to do once the weather clears up?
There's not really room for recreational facilities, like in playing sports outside on a grass field, because that doesn't exist. But we do have, we have places they can play board games and congregate together inside during inclement weather. I suppose during the winter, or during the spring and summer, we can put a basketball hoops out there for folks to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Council President. Well, I think Administrator Perkins is gonna talk to us about...
I think Mr. Finch summed it up well. We're looking at what those costs are now, and what that looks like under the standards and practices of the Salvation Army, which are different than the previous provider. So, there are some adjustments that we need to make, that we're gonna need to come back to you, once we have those numbers solidified a little bit further.
So, I understand there might be, within the scope of 250 people, there might be changes, but I'm hearing a new scope of 350, and as I said, I think I've heard from you before, we don't have that identified in the budget for the 2023. So, I'm just wondering, I don't, I'm not sure that council's really been involved in discussions about whether we need to change the scope to 350, and where we are on that, because it sounds like we're negotiating 350, but we've only authorized funding for 250.
And while right now, as part of that discussion, we're also trying to ascertain and determine what those funding costs might be. So, we are in a position to better come back to you and say, if we went to this number, here's what those additional funds and costs would be. So, we have that complete package when we come back to you. And as Major mentioned, they've only been on the job for 42 days, so they're trying to work through those numbers now. And at the same time, trying to do the right thing in terms of, as Councilmember Kinnear said, I mean, if there's someone in need, and we need to house someone, that we're trying to make that right choice on a daily basis, even though, Council President, to your point, we might not have all those budget things worked out yet.
Yeah.
Because at the end of the day, I mean, we are trying to serve the human beings, and then catch up on the other side.
No, I get it. I just, there might be another place that we house them, that might be more appropriate. I guess my request is that when you're doing the contract negotiations, you do the original scope as option A, and if you have an option B that says, "And if we wanted to scale," then you do an option B, as opposed to us just getting one, because that would be frustrating to me, so.
That's interesting.
Because we have to figure out, if we're gonna do an option B that costs a lot more, we're gonna have to figure out some money from our partners to do that, so.
Agreed. And we're trying to make sure we have that complete package, so I can come back to you, and we will come back to you with those, that information, before we execute any type of document.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
City Administrator, you said the total package, and we've been talking about that since September. So, that was a trigger word for me, just so you know. My concern is, and I want those people housed, absolutely, but it is such an unknown for us financially, and my concern is, we'll all of a sudden have expanded capacity to 500 people that we haven't allocated money for, but we're gonna provide the service for, and we're like damned if we do, and damned if we don't. And so, that is a pretty untenable position for us, at least for me as finance chair, to be in going forward. So, the total package would be great, and somebody then give me a date that the contract, the original contract that's out there now, will be signed, and then I know that Major's gonna come back. We had asked for 30 days, but now 90 days for our update on really what's going on out there, and some new numbers that we can work with.
Councilmember Ringo.
So, I've heard, you know, from Empire Health, that, you know, they're looking at treating it, you know, sort of like a natural disaster model, those kinds of things. We're talking about FEMA regulations and things like that. Is there any desire from the state? Have we approached the state about declaring this an emergency, and then being able to receive some funding in different avenues, or, you know, operating under disparate different, you know, regulations?
So, we've had some conversations with them. The state, the state's been supportive, as you probably are aware already, Councilmember Ringo, they've allocated $2 million for operations at Track, which has been very much appreciated. We're having further conversations with them about additional monies and revenues that we may anticipated are needed, and we will probably be having some conversations with all of you. Once we look at this additional cost, after the assessment is completed by the Salvation Army, there may be additional funds we would need to seek out from the state and others. We have made it clear as an administration, and I have specifically as a city administrator, in meetings with our other partners, the city's financial ability to go any further is done. We need support from our regional partners, be that the county, other cities. The county has actually stepped up with half a million dollars, which we greatly appreciate, and part of the 350 beds we're getting is being supported by those dollars. So, those are not additional dollars that we're having to put out as a city, but they're coming through the county. But we've made it really clear, if there's any additional expenses via the operation and other things, we are at a limit from a city standpoint, as to how much we can move ahead at this time. And once we get those numbers, we'll be able to come back and have further conversations.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Along those same lines, you mentioned state money, and what about federal money? What about FEMA money? What about asking the feds for, this is an emergency, we have one of the, or had one of the largest ROW camps in the country, and we're a northern climate, so what about asking the feds for money?
And we're fortunate to have our new neighborhood housing and human services director, Kim McCollum, comes from the federal government. And so, Kim is right now working along those lines to see where those additional funds are, not are there additional funds, but where those additional funds are to bring forward into this conversation, because we have to scour every source of revenue, be it federal, state, local, or private, that we can to help support what we're doing.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Sorry, one more circle back to Major Ken. Could you speak a little bit more to the laundry? You said that you give them tokens to go and do their laundry off-site. Is that their personal and their bedding?
Oh, that's a great question. We actually have a contract with an outside provider to do the bedding. We try to change that once a week on the sheets and blankets, and then the towels, they get a new towel every time they take a shower, and the washcloth. And so, but for personal items, we actually give them a bus pass and a card to go do their laundry somewhere else. So, we take care of the bedding, and they have to take care of their own personal items. Again, this is another place where, in the future, if we were able to get a laundry facility, like we have at the Way Out, they would get, we would do the same thing we do at the Way Out and Bell Shelter. We give you the card, you wash your stuff right there on the premises, but we still do commercial off-site, because the machines and investment, that type of equipment is pretty significant.
Thank you.
Councilmembers of the...
Yeah, I wanted to go back to all the capital improvements of the beds and the partitions. Where did that funding come from for all of those improvements?
So, for the beds specifically and the partitions, those are coming from the half million dollars from the county's supportive contribution.
So, then the county's still funding the flex space from 250 to 350 for operations, too?
They had a half a million dollars that was being used for additional showers, the additional handwashing stations, the office trailers, the change out of the beds, the mattresses, as well as the partitions, storage containers, the electrical work for the charging stations. That is all within that $500,000 that they've agreed to support.
All the capital, then.
And we just felt it was important to get to the 350, to have those, since we could get this all done at one time, to at least have those available in case something happens, there's damage to one, we've got others available, regardless of whether we went to 350. It was just to have that available, and it fit within the budget that they had provided us.
And then, how many bathrooms are there right now at Track? Showers and toilets?
As of tomorrow, there'll be an additional eight showers. So, we have six current, additional eight. And then, for the restrooms, there are currently 15 regular porta-potties and two ADA. Should we go past the 250 significantly, then we have to add more, one for every 15. So, we'll go to like 20 and four.
Yeah, so, it still won't be enough. Are you getting more after the shipment?
Well, once, we're currently not operating at 350, but soon as we get to this, and then get the okay to go past the 250 number, then we'll have to bring more in.
I had a question, actually, I'm not sure which one of you to answer it, but it's always been murky to me. I've asked to have it clarified, but understanding that we haven't been operating that well, this idea on our contract of, what is the regular overnight shelter space, and then we have the surge capacity, if it's particularly cold, particularly hot, smoky, you know, whether those require beds, not beds. And I'm just wondering how we're approaching that in the contract, because right now, the contract is just not, it's pretty much silent on that. And I'm just wondering how you all are thinking about that. When does it trigger? I guess that's like, okay. Now, because my understanding is that these are cost-reimbursable contracts, for the most part. So, in order to go past the 250, there needs to be some kind of trigger and documentation that, okay, we're in this weather condition, you can surge, it's maybe not serviced to the same amount as the regular. So, I'm just wondering how we're imagining that.
Sure, and as you suggest, Council President, I mean, there's a difference, I think, between the taking over the scope work as it was, right, versus what we're trying to build now, based on both lessons learned, as well as what we're seeing in terms of the increased weather conditions and potentially capacity. To answer, I think the, at least one of the questions that you had, is that we do try, by principle, to try to drive the decision in terms of kind of triggering, allowing additional people in to be at the lowest level, i.e. the operator level, as possible, because we want the people on the ground to be able to make those right decisions, you know, as it occurs. So, that's why it's not purposeful, but it's just, it's just been kind of a statement of fact, that ultimately, you know, if you're at 250, and two people come up, right, and they need a spot, right, that that operator can make the right decision based on the environments, they don't necessarily have to call someone, or get an email, or otherwise. And so, that's kind of how it's designed. The Shelter Mesopotamian portal was also designed, so it captures the weather information every day, right? So, that becomes the reference guide, that as we look for the reimbursement piece of this, that we can look back, and we can look at the weather conditions and be able to kind of vet, if you will, if they've gone to, you know, 262, right, for a given night, because of the weather conditions, that, yeah, we should do something for that additional 12-person capacity they had, or otherwise, if that makes, if that answers your question.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So, with this increase in capacity, what's being factored in for the supportive services that are being offered at the Track?
Revive. Yeah, actually, revive, they're here tonight.
So, revive is here. We did ask them to attend. We didn't have them. Part of this presentation was more focused on what Salvation Army is doing, but maybe from...
Thanks. So, as you come, we had originally agreed on a certain number of people they were going to serve, so it's the same kind of scenario.
I'm gonna let her explain some of the great work, and they've been doing some fantastic work since they've been on board as well.
Okay, repeat the question. What would you like to know?
So, we have been talking about this whole surge capacity, so more people. What does that happen to the supportive services that were contracted for a certain number? What happens to those additional people, so they don't receive services? Or what's the negotiation point on that?
We would always love more funding. We told you guys we could serve about 180 people over the year with our supportive housing services, with our six housing specialists. We have enrolled 250, and we noticed that last week. Now, there are folks who've come and stayed a day, and we can't find them again. Our caseloads are full. We're really trying to help everyone we can. We've already made the decision that because we're able to bill some of the FCS services, that we can put additional people down there that would just basically be coming out of our funding, and they'd be working on fee-for-service quotas for doing the Medicaid services down there. So, we're trying to supplement, because we really do want to help everyone. But yeah, we're not even in CMIS yet, and so, those 250 people we've been able to enroll, we're not even able to capture data on them yet. So, we're really just kind of a work in progress here, in trying to be able to move forward[1772.21] So we're really just kind of a work in progress here in trying to be able to move forward as fast as we can, but also knowing that being able to capture that data is really going to help us kind of see the whole system and see where we're at with folks, and being able to coordinate CMIS with Salvation Army and know how many days people have stayed, and what chances we have at getting some of the folks who are willing to stick it out to engage in a long-term process for housing versus folks who are kind of coming in, checking it out, leaving, where are they going? How are we sort of helping them in kind of a long-term service? Will they come back? Those are some of the things we're just sort of trying to sort out in our process right now, but if we could have additional funding to cover more housing specialists, more peer engagement folks on the floor, it would be very helpful. We're trying to focus on the big five, we're calling it, when folks come in. We're trying to get them hooked up with health insurance, enrolled in our programs, getting them an ID, a cell phone, so we can find them if they leave, and then CMIS entry and coordinated entry assessment, as well as a DSHS trip, which DSHS is now coming in the building, as so is CHAZ. We're trying to get them enrolled with primary care providers as well. It's just a lot of work. We have six housing specialists and three peers who are trying to do it all, and so we're just trying our best, I guess.
I'm just curious, so you said that you've enrolled 250. I assume that doesn't necessarily mean that they've actually found housing.
No, we've enrolled them in services with us.
Gotcha. And so, but in terms of, are you able to monitor? So you said there's been a number of folks who've been there for like a day, you can't find them again, but for the others, the folks that you've actually had some ability to work with, have you seen progress? I mean, is there any measurable progress, anything that you have ability to share? I mean, to?
Yeah, I mean, even as simple as, we helped two people get bus tickets home to New York and Minnesota. A woman who was fleeing domestic violence, who when we were able to identify her family on Friday night, they were so happy to hear from her, they thought she'd been kidnapped. They hadn't heard from her in years. Another gentleman trying to get to New York, who was trying to get back to his father when he'd been living with his mother, and like those kinds of things. The other thing that's opened up is all of the commerce funding for people at Camp Hope. So we've been able to identify 85 people at Track who've come from Camp Hope. Now they're eligible for the Catalyst Project, they're eligible for our four Section Eight vouchers a month. We have a detox unit opening through compassionate addiction treatment. We have 25 additional housing vouchers that are funded for 18 months for folks. I mean, there's just a lot of things sort of opening up, and people are getting excited about the opportunities that are down there. So, yeah. And the good news is, we're able to see people once or twice a week, and they're staying engaged. Help me with this, help me with this, and we're just helping them in that process. I wish I had numbers on how many people have gotten jobs, but there's a lot of people down there working who are just trying to get housing the old-fashioned way. Let me save some money, let me improve my credit, let me have enough money. We have funding for that first and last month's rent when they really have enough income to present to a landlord saying, I do have, you know, more than half of my income, or a third or half of my income wouldn't be going to rent, I'm making twice what the rent is. So, yeah, it just takes time, and we're kind of dealing with that never-ending, drinking from a fire hose is what we call it, with the brand-new people who are there in the morning, trying to make sure we engage them, as well as continuing to serve the people who are engaged in a long-term process with us. We're just trying to navigate that.
And just one more. Do you have, obviously, housing is incredibly difficult for everybody, but do you or your organization in particular have specific relationships with landlords to try and expedite?
Yeah, absolutely. We've probably gotten four people in leases from down there as well. I just, my housing specialists, some of them are here, maybe they could share better than me, but we've been focusing on getting our systems secure, and I haven't been hearing as much of the success stories, but we do have a ton of landlords. We have housing specialists who've worked in this town as housing specialists for other organizations for the last 15, 20 years. We have some good connections, as well as opening up a connection with the housing navigators, who do have the connection. Daniel is the president of the Landlord Association, and so he's working with us to identify more resources and connections, relationships with those landlords as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Do you sense there is a lack of urgency in trying to help or assist these folks get to the next phase of their life on this continuum?
No. Like I said, it's drinking from a fire hose. Salvation Army's been in there for, what, 40 days? They're trying to set up all of their systems. We're trying to work with them and not step on any toes while we're trying to coordinate people coming in. We're trying to coordinate with them how they can identify people who might be at risk of getting kicked out due to substance use disorders or mental health conditions, and trying to triage them to us first. I think everyone is moving as fast as they possibly can, and it's still just not fast enough for what this community needs.
Thank you.
More questions from anyone? I have a few more, but. So one of my questions, I think this is for a major, there's people who don't, it's not going to work for them to stay there, for whatever reason, but there might be different points of view from them and staff of when that is, and I'm wondering what kind of process you have for people if they're not working out, to give them every chance they can. And then, sort of second and third, if it's nighttime or it's super cold out, what accommodations do you have to get them to someplace else? And third, how do you document all that, so that if someone really feels like later they've been abused by a particular person or the system, they have, we have some ability to say, no, we gave you a chance, and here's the thing?
So the system we use, it's the same one we always use, is just, we have certain standards of conduct. You can't assault our staff or assault another guest. You can't openly use drugs on the facilities, and you can't be having sexual relations in places where that should have been taking place. So if any of those happen, sometimes it could be a warning, and sometimes assaults are usually, you have to be, you're asked to leave. But they're asked to leave for a variety of different time periods. It could be 24 hours, it could be three days, it could be a week. In the case of a serious assault, it might be for a much longer timeframe. We've had our staff actually, in our shelters, not just this one, but really injured by folks because of the drugs they're using, they don't really know what's going on, and they're, they actually harm our staff. So those kinds of, when we ask those folks to leave, they'll be asked to leave for a longer period of time. But we want to, we're about grace. We want to, you can make a mistake and then come back, and then we'll still try to work with you. We really, the whole idea is to get you off the street, so we do have some flexibility and grace in the whole process. As for nighttime, so we try to give them a bus pass to get to another shelter. Try, we give them a bus pass to get to the next shelter. The buses end, I think, at 11 o'clock. Is that accurate? 11? I think it's 11? I'm not sure.
Pretty close.
But anyway, if it's past that time, then we might look at transporting them to a different shelter if they're not a violence threat. So, in a perfect world, but can somebody get kicked out for attacking a staff at midnight and then be found on the street? Yeah, absolutely, that can happen, but that is very rare when that actually happens. And we do keep documentation and everything.
So when the Trent Shelter was first being talked about, and then eventually opened, there was a lot of conversation, I very specifically remember, around how we would exit people or allow them to enter, specifically to protect the neighborhood and the surrounding businesses, et cetera. So I guess, how frequently is there an instance where we exit somebody and we just give them a bus pass versus actually giving them a specific ride out of the neighborhood and to where they're supposed to go?
Well, if it's during the day, we just don't have the staff to be giving them a ride, and we're not exiting that many people, but we don't have the staff to be giving everybody a ride all around town. So we typically use the buses, bus system for that, so that's the way that works. The only time, it's usually the nighttime stuff where we'd have to transport somebody. And we transport people from Cannon over to Trent when Cannon exceeds its number of 80 also. So it does, we have people driving them all over the place. It's really, the real issue is, if the person's a threat to the safety of folks, then we have to make a different decision. It's not always perfect, but I can't, I can't put somebody who's just assaulted one of our staff in a vehicle in an enclosed space with another staff. That's just not a healthy thing to do.
No, but I also want to make sure that we're not, you know, creating an issue for the neighborhood by leaving individuals who probably should be somewhere else, you know, to the neighborhood to camp or maybe do other, you know, negative things. And I still continue to this day to see kind of a small uptick in camping situations and things like that in the Chief Gary neighborhood. So I know it's happening, can't say specifically it's because of the, of Track, but relative to before Track, it has been, seen an increase, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Puna.
Yeah, I had, it was a question from Mr. Perkins. This issue about water freezing in the sinks seems like something that we brought up, or actually, no, we brought this back up when it was opening. I brought it up and asked you about it, and said this is not something that's unpredictable. We know that the hand washing stations are outside, it's going to get cold and freeze. So I'm pretty disappointed to see that's an issue. We've been hearing reports about diseases spreading and that, so I'm just wondering why we got to the situation we're in right now.
Well, we're still working on getting those hand washing stations with hot water. I believe some of them do have, I want to come up and answer that directly, so I get this right.
So we actually brought in additional hand washing stations, because when we looked at the, again, we looked at our standards, we realized we didn't have enough sinks. So there's actually 10 hand washing stations now, five of which are inside, five are outside. And the five that are outside, the provider initially had a solution for warming the tanks, and it turned out to not work well, and so that's, that's the part they're still working on. So we do have hand wash stations inside, and the shower units, again, when that's connected up, will have more than enough hand washing locations, and with warm water.
Well, it's frustrating, because we knew this was coming.
I just, this is a, just a stab in the dark, and I don't know of Ms. McCollum, but I generally, I don't think FEMA considers homelessness an emergency, so, but I'm wondering if you have any ideas that you're exploring or any hope for us on that.
This is Kim McCollum, who is new to the position of Director of Neighborhood Housing and Human Services. Very fortunate to have her. She came over from Housing Urban Development on the federal level, so she has a lot of experience on those federal concepts.
And this is like my fifth week, so bear with me a little bit on this, but there has been some different types of funding that I've been looking at. Often, it doesn't quite fit. The FEMA is rather difficult, mainly because, if you all remember like Malden, when they had the fire, how long that takes, and often there's not that individual assistance that FEMA will give out, but it is something that, it's good that you mentioned that, and I will look at some of that as well. I've done a lot of FEMA disasters in my past, have been in shelters for three months, helping individuals try to get housing, so I know it can be a longer period of time. So it is an interesting aspect, but I've also looked at a lot of the different, you know, HUD, HHS. Sometimes there will be funding that you never, especially in HHS, that sometimes you can make it fit. I just haven't had quite the time yet to really look at some of those different, you know, even like the economic development side federally, just to help maybe some of the supportive services in regards to getting employment. I mean, there's lots of sorts of different, sometimes they're there, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. So that's my main focus right now. We've talked a little bit about some of the HUD money. So it's just, I am working on it, and I'm, you know, probably in another couple of weeks, I hope to have a little bit more that I can share in regards to what fits, what doesn't fit. Okay? Thank you.
Are there any more questions for this crew? Councilmember Bingle.
This is less a comment or a question, more a comment, but, I mean, this is a situation involving hundreds of people, where we've had providers change, we've had conditions change, we've had a number of things that happened, and the staff has to adapt on the fly. And given budget constraints and all the different moving pieces, there are certainly things that we can criticize, and there are certainly things that we can do better, but what we're asking of staff and of this community is a real Herculean effort. And I think it's important for us to keep sort of in focus what we're trying to do here, because every single one of us could have been better in some way or another, I'm sure on this, but watching the staff come together, trying to solve problems, to help people in crisis, watching as we're navigating through this, what I would ask of my fellow council members is, yes, let's ask for excellence and those kinds of things, but let's also extend a little bit of grace in some ways where, you know, as things are coming together, situations are changing, we have to adapt, and we have to do what is right in the moment. And so certainly, let's be the best that we can be, but, you know, let's extend a little bit of grace as well, being that we're not the ones actually doing the work.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle, for that. However, I want to remind you of that, when you say you don't feel a sense of urgency of what's happening in East Central, like you spoke of today, people are doing the work, and we are giving them grace, and things are happening that are out of our control. So there is an urgency. We all want people to be housed, we don't want anybody to freeze. So to hear that again, like, well, there is no sense of urgency. Well, there is. These people have just told us there's a sense of urgency, and they're doing the best work that they can.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I just, if there was urgency, the camp wouldn't be there 12 months later. That's all.
Yeah, also, I don't think I mentioned anything about not feeling a sense of urgency today on, when it comes to the shelter. We're getting an update on the shelter, and that's what I'm referencing.
Any other comments?
I, I want to thank Wayne Pavy. Wayne, thank you so much. You're kind of that breath of fresh air that blows into a room, and you guys are working really hard. There is a sense of urgency, and I see Track and I see Camp Hope almost integral, because we are moving people out of Camp Hope into Track, into Catalyst. So to my mind, this is the same, they're all the same. We're working, you all, are working as hard as you can, as fast as you can, but we're dealing with people who have individual stories and issues, and it's, one size does not fit all. So thank you for all your hard work, all of you. Appreciate it.
And I just, you don't have to come back up, but my understanding, Wayne, all that work that you're doing so urgently at Track, you're doing the same work at Camp Hope. So it's the same.
We're trying to get them together and create a warm, friendly environment at Track if people want to come here, and the good news is, their beds are full. Yes, we kind of turn people away, but people are coming. Like, keep investing in this, because people are coming.
All right. So I just want to thank all of you who presented and took our questions. I mean, this, we spent a lot of time on it, it's super important to all of us, as it is obviously to you, but I thought it was a very productive conversation. It's so helpful to hear all of it, and I appreciate everyone's willingness to answer every question the best they could, and all the work that you do. So please, keep at it, and this is probably our last formal.
Can I ask my question?
Yes. In one minute, this is probably our last formal meeting of the year, but we will still be working on it, just as you, and we'll see you at the other side of the room. Councilmember Trent.
This was my original question.
Okay, great.
I just am curious, what do the 911 calls look like? What, what's the? And what does the response look like? Are we getting fire trucks, ambulances, police cars? What's that look like?
So, great question. We have the automatic monitoring system. Part of that, I believe some of you have seen in the past, or we've definitely briefed it, about 267 calls to the address, and just like you would see in the community, this specific address is a microcosm of society. Everything from cardiac arrest, someone's worst day, down to stubbed toe that resulted in a 911 call, and everything in between. So the response in the city of Spokane is physician-led, and it's designed based on evidence and data. So we send what's called a tiered response. For the stubbed toe, you'll get a BLS response, at least one EMT. For a cardiac arrest, you'll get two fire companies with seven people, and two of them are often paramedic with, and ambulance as well, with two additional people. So essentially, bringing the emergency room for critical calls when there is a critical need, and then right-sizing a response when there is not a critical need, and those are triaged, like many of you that have called 911 and had that experience, have experienced.
And is there room for the vehicles?
There can always, there can always be improvements, just like in most of the commercial businesses or any of our downtown streets. During some parts of the day, it's really congested, and it's difficult to get through, and other times, it's not. So it's just something that we work on through the partnership with Salvation Army, and same thing for a number of our other commercial buildings. It, you know, our streets are narrow, and sometimes access can be tough, but we get around it. The main thing is getting the providers to the people in need, and we do that without a problem.
Thanks.
I'm glad you remembered your question. Thank you.
All right. Council President, could I just close? I want to thank the mayor and this council for your support and your leadership on this topic. It is greatly appreciated by myself and staff. I also would like to offer, we would be willing to come back in mid-January for the second part of our 90-day assessment review, and provide you with another report with some of the other details we were not able to bring forward this evening. With that, again, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. So now we have a couple of appointments. We have one appointment and one reappointment.
Appointment of Gary A. Stokes for the Spokane Public Library Board for a term of January 1, 2023, through March 31, 2027, and reappointment of Carl Reed Jesson to Salvary Review Commission for a term of January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2026. for a term of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2026.
So I'm notified we did not interview Mr. Stokes, but I think he's well-known to most of us, so I don't, unless there's an objection, we can still vote to approve. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you for your service, and if you're interested in serving on a city border commission, you can go to our website that has all of them listed, and what they do, and what openings are currently out there, and which ones are going to be coming available soon, and you apply to the mayor's office for just about all of them, and the mayor decides who to nominate. We interview generally, and then we confirm, just like we did tonight. All right. And I think that brings us to the consent agenda. And we don't have anyone signed up for that, so if you go ahead and just read that.
Okay. Reports, contracts, and claims purchased from Action Target Provo, Utah of a fixed target turning system and installation for the Spokane Police Department firing range, utilizing GSA Cooperative Contract GS-07-0482Y, $153,472. Number two, pipe pre-orders in support of the Marshall Road Transmission Phase One project with A Consolidated Supply Spokane Valley, Washington, $62,736.55. BHD Fowler Spokane Valley, Washington, $156,921.56. And C Corin Maine Spokane Valley, Washington, $1,751,355.90. Number three, pipe preorder with Corin Maine Spokane Valley, Washington, in support of the SIA Transmission Line Crossing Under I-90 Project, $1,029,050.45. Number four, value blanket orders to approve purchases without bringing each purchase over the city purchase limit to City Council for approval with ACDW Government Vernon Hills, Illinois for technology, equipment, hardware, and software for various departments, $120,000 plus tax. B Software House International Incorporated Somerset, New Jersey for software products, including professional services, maintenance and support, subscription upgrades, $650,000 plus tax. Number five, purchase from Traffic Safety Supply Company Portland, Oregon of perforated square steel tubing for the Street Department, $90,000. Number six, purchase from Salt Distributors Incorporated Spokane Valley, Washington of Road Salt for the Street Department, utilizing Washington State contract number 11021, $140,000. Number seven, value blanket renewals, one of four for January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023 for the Waste Energy Facility with A Cabot-Norrit Activated Carbon Marshall, Texas for the purchase of activated carbon, annual cost not to exceed $105,000 plus tax. B National Filter Media Olive Branch, Mississippi for the purchase of fabric filter bags not to exceed $150,000, including tax and delivery. Number eight, value blankets for December 15, 2022 through December 14, 2023 for the Waste Energy Facility with A Dyckman Spokane Valley, Washington for the as-needed purchase of variable frequency drives, annual cost not to exceed $70,100 plus tax. B Hellfrick Brothers Boiler Works Incorporated Lawrence, Massachusetts for the purchase of super heater two panels, $1,663,596.15, including tax and delivery. Number nine, contract renewal, one of four, with HydroTech Generator Repair Plus Incorporated Doing Business as Hydraulics Plus Spokane Valley, Washington for the off-site rebuild of hydraulic and pneumatic cylinders at the Waste Energy Facility from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, not to exceed $1 million, including tax. Number 10, contract renewal, three of four, with Eurofinns Environment Testing LLC Spokane Valley, Washington for analytical testing services at the Waste Energy Facility from November 1, 2023 through October 31, 2023, annual cost not to exceed $35,000, including tax. Number 11, revenue contract renewal amendment, three of four, with American Recycling Corporation Spokane Valley, Washington for the sale of the Waste Energy Facility's metals and scrap metals from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, anticipated revenue approximately, approximately $300,000. Excuse me. Number 12, contract amendment with cost with United Rentals, stamp for Connecticut for tank rentals at the Waste Energy Facility from August 1, 2022 through July 31, 2023, additional $80,000, total contract cost $100,000, including tax. Number 13, purchase from Western Peterbilt Liberty Lake, Washington, a Peterbilt 520 chain and hook roll-off vehicle for the Solid Waste Collections Department utilizing Sourcewell contract number 060920PMC, $433,549.12, including tax. Number 14, five-year value blanket with POMPS Tire Service Spokane as a secondary source for the purchase of miscellaneous tires for city vehicles utilizing Washington State contract number 0519, estimated annual amount $150,000. Number 15, master contract with POMPS Tire Service Spokane as a secondary source for tire-related services for city vehicles through March 31, 2024, utilizing Washington State contract number 00519, estimated annual amount $150,000. Number 16, contract renewal, three of four, with Wingfoot Commercial Tire Systems LLC Spokane Valley, Washington for the tire-related services for all city vehicles from October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, utilizing Washington State contract 00519, $150,000. Number 17, public works agreement with McClintock and Turk Incorporated Spokane for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility membrane pilot room feed pump installation project from November 1, 2022 through June 23, 2023, $71,624 plus applicable bonds and taxes. Number 18, supplemental agreement with Local 270 asked me to allow non-local 270 police employees to perform call processing duties at police dispatch during the transition of duties from Shrek to the Spokane Police Department. Number 19, purchase and sale agreement with Red Band Development LLC for the purchase of the surplus property at 2912 East Wabash Avenue acquired through the Spokane County Tax foreclosure process, $50,000 revenue. Number 25, year contract amendment extension with Bartek LLC Sprague, Washington for transporting, processing, and composting organics for the Solid Waste Collections Department from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027, estimated annual expenditure for first year $1,950,000. Number 21, report of the mayor paying claims and payments approved to prove obligations, including those of Parks and Library and Library through December 2, 2022, total $13,509,758.56 with Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $12,974,179.61. Number 22, city council meetings for November 28 and December 1, 2022. Number 23, dispersed funds from the Department of Commerce's Office of Homeless Youth, Youth to Volunteers of America from October 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023 for the following: A SOS InReach Program, $158,910.40; B YAHP Bridge Housing Program, $237,325.
All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda passes. And then we're on to special budget ordinances. Nobody has signed up to testify on those, but we'll do them one at a time.
Okay. Ordinance C 36341, amending ordinance number C 36161 passed by the City Council December 13, 2021, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately in passage, and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in American Rescue Plan Fund, number one, increase the appropriation by $3,700,000. A of the increased appropriation, $3,700,000 is provided solely for uniformed overtime in the Fire Department. This action arises from the need to pay fire uniformed overtime while understaffed.
Any council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C 36342, American Rescue Plan Fund, number one, increase the appropriation by $2,500,000. A of the increased appropriation, $2,500,000 is provided solely for uniformed overtime in the Police Department. This action arises from the need to pay police uniformed overtime while understaffed.
Any council commentary on this one? Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero, and before you go further, I'm going to make one. We don't. Yeah.
No, there weren't anyone, there wasn't anyone signing.
We didn't see any. We do have you sign. Yeah. We don't, we don't see it. I'm sorry. We can chat afterwards. I was going to make one editorial comment about these two, American Rescue Plan for overtime for fire and police, is that after tonight, we'll be pretty much out of American Rescue Plan funds, and we're not going to have it available for overtime next year, and we've worked with the administration and put what they promised us as a realistic budget for overtime, because there's not going to be any money otherwise, and so we've done that. So I just wanted to note that. But let's go on to the next special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36343, General Obligation Bond Redemption Fund, number one, increase the appropriation by $663,628. A of the increased appropriation, $663,128 is provided solely for interest expenses on debt that are, that, on debt that are anticipated to exceed budgeted amounts. B of the increased appropriation, $500,000, $500 is provided solely for interest expenses on taxpayer refunds that are anticipated to exceed budgeted amounts. C, the increased appropriation is funded by the General Obligation Bond Redemption Funds on appropriated fund balance. This action arises from the need to adjust appropriation authority in the General Obligation Bond Redemption Fund.
Any council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C 36344, Office of Performance Management Fund, number one, decrease the appropriation for a senior project manager position by $31,000. Two, decrease the appropriation for continuous improvement analyst position by $31,000. Three, increase the appropriation for contractual services by $62,000. A, there is no change to the overall appropriation level in the Office of Performance Management Fund. This action arises from the need for contractual support to meet project and services delivery commitments.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero. Do you have the right language on this next one now? Okay.
Ordinance C 36347, American Rescue Plan Fund, fifth round of funding programs, number one, increase appropriation by $4,800,000 funded from the city's direct allocation of the state and local fiscal recovery fund of the American Rescue Plan Act. A of the increased appropriation, $150,000 is provided as revenue replacement for the purpose of offsetting the amount of accessory dwelling unit permit fee waivers directed under the Spokane Municipal Code. B of the increased appropriation, $4 million is provided for the purpose of providing matching grant funding of $1 for every dollar in outstanding utility bills written off or credited to the bills of economically, economically challenged customers within the city of Spokane impacted by the COVID pandemic, on the condition that the city not waive or reduce any wastewater tax obligations owed under the Spokane Municipal Code to customers outside the city of Spokane without first obtaining approval by a majority of the Spokane City Council. C of the increased appropriation, $150,000 is provided as revenue replacement for the purpose of developing a broadband infrastructure study supporting increased access within the city of Spokane. D of the increased appropriation, $500,000 is provided for the purpose of helping the city fund current homelessness obligations. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority for funding support, supporting Spokane utility customers, aiding in increasing housing, increasing broadband access, and helping with homelessness efforts within the city.
All right. Council commentary on this? All right. Prepare to vote. Okay. That passes five to two. All right. We're to resolutions, and we have, and ordinances. We have several. We have people signed up for the resolution 0108 regarding Camp Hope and the budget ordinance C 36345. The rest of them, we don't have any public commentary that we have here. So go ahead, Ms. Fister.
Resolution 2022-105, reducing the speed limit on Cedar Road from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour from the Cheney Spokane Road intersection to the South City Limits.
All right. Any council commentary on this one? All right. Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero.
Resolution 2022-106, regarding the update to Appendix A of the public rule for the city of Spokane Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility and Industrial Pretreatment Program and Lab Analysis Fees.
Any council commentary on this? All right. Prepare to vote. That passes seven to zero.
Resolution 2022-0107, committing to a goal to achieve zero traffic fatalities and severe injuries among all road users, including people walking, biking, using transit, and driving.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. That passes seven to zero.
Resolution number 2022-0180, I'll read in its entirety. Would you like me to read the one before it's amended? Or do you want to amend it first?
Are we? Which one are you?
The one 08.
Let's do the other. Let's, let's do the rest of these ordinances, and then we'll come back to that.
Ordinance C 35237, vacating the alley between Pacific Avenue and Second Avenue from Scott Street to Sprague Way.
And I know Eldon is here. Does anyone need to hear from you? Thank you always, Eldon, for being here. Any discussion, council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C 36308, granting a non-exclusive franchise to use the public right-of-way to provide non-cable telecommunications service to the public to Intermountain Infrastructure Group LLC, subject to certain conditions and duties as further provided. First reading held November 7, 2022.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Prepare to vote.
No, no. Did you push your button, Lori? Of course.
All right. Prepare to vote again. Three, two, one. All right. There we go. Seven to zero.
Third time's a charm.
Ordinance C 36340, relating to the executive and administrative organization of the city, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 3.01A.253 and 3.01A.254. This removes code enforcement department from Development Services Center and code enforcement department, and combines it with parking services department to create a new code and parking services department.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right. That passes to seven, zero. Now let's go to that resolution.
And did you wish to amend it first, or have me read the old version, or the previous version of course amended?
Let's have the motion to amend, so, and you have the amended version as well, right? You have a motion?
And this is the resolution expressing the city's position supporting the July 20 plan?
Yes.
Okay. So I, based on the conversation that we had with all of us at the 3:30, I would like to amend and add a, be it also resolved, and you all have a copy of this, I'll read it, that the city of Spokane requests that the state of Washington, Spokane County, regional cities, foundations, and business community work together to urgently identify new permanently affordable housing units, agree on locations, and provide the funding necessary to rehouse all unsheltered individuals within Spokane County, especially those, it should say who, but it says that reside in Camp Hope. And then we have a small one on the last page that says, be it also resolved, is the intent of the city of Spokane that no employee, agent, or elected official of the city acting within the scope of their duties for this city shall act to participate in the removal of the camp without a judicial order or the consent of the landowner. And then we, I'd like to strike the next paragraph. I would like to add illegal action and strike or provide material support, too.
Okay. The motion, second. Any council commentary on the motion to amend? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah. I appreciate this coming out of that conversation from before. I appreciate some updated language on some things that we did agree on here, particularly in the section about the funding coming from the state. I thought it was smart to also add from the county and other areas, because as we all discuss all the time, the city of Spokane is unfairly bearing, bearing the burden for the entire region. And so I appreciate you adding the state, and then it was, it was smart to also add the other areas, because we do, we do need. the other areas because we do, we do need it, so.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Wait, she has to read the whole thing.
No, no, of the amendment first, we have to amend.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Any abstentions? Okay, now you can read the amended version.
Resolution number 2022-0108, a resolution expressing the city's position supporting the July 20th plan approved by the mayor and city council president to rehouse the residence in the right-of-way and against leading or supporting unauthorized actions to remove unhoused individuals from Camp Hope, whereas the Spokane City Council has considered the legal and policy implications of Spokane County's threat to forcibly remove the campers in their habitation located behind a perimeter fence on property owned by the Washington State Department of Transportation without first obtaining landowner consent or judicial order issued after due process. And whereas the city of Washington, with the support of the governor, the legislature, the department of commerce, the department of transportation, and the state patrol, offered $24.5 million towards a right-of-way hereafter Row Initiative to rehouse individuals living within state right-of-ways within Spokane County, especially Camp Hope located within the city of Spokane. And whereas Mayor Nadine Woodward and City Council President Brian Beggs convened a stakeholder group that included regional government officials and their staff members, along with consulting expertise from homeless service providers, to develop a proposal to provide long-term improved housing that Camp Hope residents would voluntarily move to in order to facilitate the permanent closing of Camp Hope. And whereas on July 2022, after providing review and commenting opportunities to stakeholders and experts, Mayor Woodward and Council President Beggs signed a letter with an attached plan that would create up to 1,447 housing units at an estimated cost of $34,483,000. And whereas the proposed plan would leverage millions of additional investment dollars to permanently provide appropriate housing and services to the individual needs of the remaining residents of Camp Hope, along with hundreds of other houseless individuals camping within Spokane County. And whereas the Department of Commerce, after due consideration, has allocated $24 million towards the initiatives identified in the plan and has executed or has pending contracts to provide housing assessments, housing, and services within that budget. And whereas the provision of services to date and other efforts is believed to have reduced the census of the camp from over 600 to no more than 417. And whereas additional efforts and funding are needed from all partners and stakeholders to ensure that all current camp residents are transitioned into the emerging housing beds for them as they become available. And whereas it is the city's clear objective to partner with the state Department of Commerce and its contractors to support and facilitate this process, to act in accordance with initiatives that serve this mission and clarify the city's position so that the work of city employees aligns with this purpose. And whereas the July 20th plan offers a viable path to permanently house all the remaining campers in the row if additional funds, local, state, federal, and private resources can be secured and specific locations for the new housing projects can be agreed upon. And whereas the unauthorized seizure of personal property of the campers in the row would likely result in the loss of personal identification and birth certificates that were obtained by government and contractor resources pursuant to the Row Initiative and will create substantial obstacles to rehousing these individuals. And whereas failure to cooperate with the existing plan or efforts to undermine it will substantially delay the rehousing of camp residents and permanent decommissioning of the Row campground. And whereas any further delays in fully implementing the July 20th plan will unnecessarily prolong the negative impacts on campers, neighbors, and businesses. And whereas the city of Spokane encourages its regional government partners, local businesses, and nonprofits to join in finalizing implementation of the July 20th plan and permanently housing Row camp residents and permanently closing the camp. And whereas Article 1, Section 7 of the Washington State Constitution and the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution protect individuals from seizure of their person or effects within their residential habitation without their consent or a judicial order issued after due process. And whereas Washington state laws regarding nuisance prohibit government action to abate alleged nuisances without due process and a prior judicial order consent to the property owner. And whereas the Ninth Circuit has held in Martin versus City of Boise, 920F, Third 584, 589, Ninth Circuit, 2019, that it is unconstitutional to punish someone simply for sleeping somewhere in public if the person has nowhere else to do so. And the city has enacted ordinances that require adequate low-barrier shelter beds before issuing criminal citations to homeless individuals except with regard to certain time and place restrictions. And whereas the Spokane County Sheriff has threatened to seize and remove homeless and disabled residents of a fenced property owned by the state of Washington, potentially subjecting them to arrest and displacement without confirming that he will first obtain consent from the property owner and without a judicial order authorizing such seizures and removals. And whereas the Spokane County Sheriff has requested the assistance of the city of Spokane and its employees to accomplish his goals regarding the removal of residents in their habitation. And whereas the deployment of law enforcement to sweep the camp subverses the crucial mission of addressing homeless in Spokane and undermines months of work by stakeholders to assist and relocate camp residents to permanent housing in order to legally close Camp Hope. And whereas the use of law enforcement for such a purpose jeopardizes both the city's July 20th commitment to work collaboratively with the state and its continued efforts to secure funding to address homelessness in the city. And whereas the city council has grave concerns that participation in the sheriff's request could imperil city of Spokane police officers, placing them in the dangerous position of displacing homeless persons without clear legal authority. This unnecessarily risks law enforcement interactions with vulnerable individuals, including disabled and/or mentally ill persons, and places those individuals and city officers at great risk. And whereas the city of Spokane seeks to protect its employees from unnecessary involvement in a noncriminal operation that could result in the use of physical force and injury upon homeless campers who have been receiving coordinated and state-sanctioned services, and where the city's interest in forcibly tearing down this operation without providing an appropriate alternative shelter or housing is low. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Spokane strongly supports the July 20th plan signed by its mayor and council president and the efforts of the state of Washington through its state patrol and departments of commerce and transportation, their respective contractors, to promptly and effectively implement it so that residents of Camp Hope can be permanently rehoused with appropriate services, and the neighborhood residents and businesses can return to normal. Be it also resolved that the city of Spokane requests that the state of Washington, Spokane County, regional cities, foundations, and the business community work together to urgently identify new permanently affordable housing units, agree on locations, and provide the additional funding necessary to rehouse all unsheltered individuals within Spokane County, especially those who reside in Camp Hope. Be it also resolved that the city of Spokane expressly disapproves of any actions to undermine the state's efforts to assist homeless individuals at the camp or actions that provide material support to remove unhoused individuals and/or their habitation from any fenced property without the prior approval of or coordination with WASDOT or absent a judicial order. Be it also resolved that the city of Spokane strongly condemns any efforts to entangle city employees and law enforcement, other operations to decommission the camp, which are unsupported by judicial authority, as this could potentially run afoul of various rights and interests claimed by campers at the WASDOT right-of-way, and could result in legal risk to the city and its employees. Be it also resolved that it is the intent of the city of Spokane that no employee, agent, or elected official of the city acting within the scope of their duties, for the city shall act to participate in the removal of the camp without a judicial order or the consent of the landowner. And be it further resolved that the city of Spokane strongly condemns any action by or directive to city of Spokane employees that would force them to take illegal action against a set of vulnerable individuals or to act contrary to the city's interests by having them participate in the county's threatened removal operation without the landowner's consent or judicial order, as all such actions or directives are outside the scope of the city's interests and mission could violate clearly established law. Be it finally resolved that the city of Spokane will not provide illegal defense or indemnification to any city employee, agent, or elected official who is sued in their personal capacity arising out of that person intentionally directing city of Spokane employees to take any action or provide any material support of the prohibited removals set out above unless the city council approves such legal defense and indemnification for that specific individual by majority vote. In considering authorizing legal defense and indemnification, the city council will consider the knowledge and good faith of the individual directing the actions of others, along with unanticipated public safety emergency mutual aid needs created by the actions of Spokane County or other actors.
All right, we have seven people signed up to testify on this, and first I'd like to invite Dave, who's participating by telephone. He's there? Oh, he's not there? Okay, all right, we called for Dave. Then let's go to Rick Bokuk. Oh, and let me remind people again, actually before you start, Rick. Again, we'll have up to three minutes, and the light will turn yellow when there's one minute left. If it turns red, I'll ask you to be done. I'll call people up in groups of three, and so if you're next up, if the next two people, if you could come up to the front row so we could reduce the time of transit back and forth. Ask that you direct your comments to me, the meeting chair, that you not denigrate anyone personally, swear, or do anything else disruptive, like shout, clap, boo, cheer, anything like that. We're going to try, even though sometimes at the front of the meetings, we do some applause on other issues for this, we're trying to create a space that just lets people's words speak for themselves. And we also ask that you confine yourself to the issue before you. So with that, oh, so the other people, Sunshine already knows, she's up here, and then after Sunshine, Justice for All is up after that. Go ahead.
Good evening. What I like about this is that it relates to our constitution, to the people, especially to people that take an oath to uphold the constitution. This basically says, if you violate it, you're going to be held accountable. Wouldn't that be great? If I ever see somebody that upholds the constitution to be held accountable for violating it? I mean, that'll make my day if I see it. And I hope you all see it too, that the constitution is what this is about, and everyone of you take an oath. And if you start taking sides with the one that is ready to disobey the constitution that takes the oath, well then you're right along with them. Take it easy.
Thanks, Rick. Sunshine is next, then Justice, and then George Taylor.
You ready?
Yes, welcome.
I'm Sunshine from Spokane. My therapy dog is in the bag I carry to this podium weekly, right here. And here's my bag of medicine from long-term effects of exposure. You can see I can't push it down very much. Three handfuls on a good day, five on a semi-bad day. We all know this story well. Well, I left domestic violence, it came with bullies that tried to stab me in the shelters. I no longer use shelters. I'm disabled. I'm at the point where my heart failure and venous insufficiency have me fainting like a goat, my knees and elbows are all skinned up from falling downstairs while doordashing. I no longer can make it up the stairs and don't know how long I'll have my job. I have my friend's adult child who is mentally ill also and relies on me. His mother's heart transplant did not take, he is my world since 2015. He is in Camp Hope with wraparound services. He has got a job with blessings under the bridge and off drugs, and is currently stabilizing on psychiatric meds, when the cops entered, putting him in a mental health crisis so bad, I had to take him out of Camp Hope for a couple nights so he can sleep without the nightmares, many symptoms. I just did two rounds of antibiotics and will be needing synthetic antibodies next. I spent Thanksgiving fighting for my life in the ER. I frequently sleep on what I call the death strip for us homeless to, it's near Sacred Heart Hospital or Deaconess or any of the hospitals, when we're not sick enough to be admitted, but we're too scared to leave. These are roads around the hospitals where some die in their cars. I have been there for eight weeks now. That kid is why I fight. I promised him he would never see me in domestic violence again. I am teaching him, city council are good people, and he believes me. I told him, some of you were there when the cops came, and scared the bejesus out of him. How do I continue to teach him that cops are also here to serve and protect all citizens? The fear tactics worked on him, thank God I saw through it for his sake. He had his grandpa pass away the night before they came, which didn't help. I am trying to pull us out to safety. He wouldn't have stabilized this much without being allowed on the land by the Department of Transportation. I constantly work to keep up, or too sick to work. So if I'm not, I try to work as much as I can when I'm not sick. We have funded Camp Hope to help him, please don't paralyze his achievements.
Sunshine, we're at the end of your time, but you did pass that out to us, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thanks for sharing tonight. Also, Sunshine reminded me, please state what city you live in as well. You don't have to do your address, but the city. So Justice is next, and after Justice is George Taylor, and then Kim Schmidt.
Hi, how you doing? What an interesting dynamic this is. My name is Justice for All, I live in the city of Spokane. From the testimonies given in council in the past and from the news media, it makes sense why there's a divide and there's fear in this community, including a video produced by Spokane City's channel that perpetuates more of that fear. Most cities have a sense of shame when it comes to how they treat, how poorly they treat the unhoused community, but this city promotes and brags about its archaic solutions that have never worked. What has worked is the community coming together. What has worked is getting people from Camp Hope into housing by removing barriers and having low barriers in the first place, and by removing those barriers, making sure people get IDs, jobs, reconnecting to their family, and a sense of stability and safety. Camp Hope has been a miracle, and without it, we may have had the same number of people die that we did in 2021. Let's change the culture in Spokane. Let's work together to fix the problems instead of obstructing and punishing those who are trying to help. And that resolution does, or this resolution does just that, is making sure that now you are speaking out, finally, it's about damn time, finally speaking out about something that you should have from a long time ago, from my opinion, because the mayor is speaking out, the police have been speaking out, the sheriff has been speaking out, but where have you been speaking out with all of this? So about damn time, so thank you. Let's work together, sorry. Dear city council members, your voice matters, so please speak up for issues. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming down, Justice. George Taylor, then Kim Schmidt, and then Becky Dickershuf.
Thank you, City Council President, City Council Members, George Taylor, pastor at Brown's Edition, All Saints Lutheran Church. I speak tonight to support this amended resolution. It's a very good step forward, as Justice just said. The record of this administration in dealing with the issues of the homeless has been too little and too late. We now know that the numbers of 375 or 780 that were spoken of tonight by previous speakers are totally inadequate to the need in Spokane and Spokane County. It's unacceptable. It's a good step forward, but it's a tiny baby step forward. We need the camel, the camel's tent is in the, the camel's head is in the tent, I'm mixing my metaphors here, but we need to move that camel into the tent, and this city council has the power to do it. We're starting tonight, this is a very good, very good resolution, it's a good start. The actual number of homeless, as Sean Vestal and others have pointed out, the Homeless Coalition, is actually 11,000 to 14,000 in Spokane County, not just the city. And the hypocrisy of Spokane County Sheriff getting involved in Camp Hope, when Spokane County government has not stepped up to the plate, as the city of Spokane is now doing, is incredible to me. It's so hypocritical. This is actually none of Sheriff Hossi's business. He shouldn't be involved, it's not a police matter. It is a public health matter. The famous journalist, H.O. Mencken, once wrote generations ago, "For every complicated problem, there is a simple solution, and it's usually wrong." As several of you have tonight said, this is a very complicated jigsaw puzzle, and tonight we're putting together a few of the puzzles. We're beginning at the corners and we're building that jigsaw. As we all learned in high school, there are three branches of government, executive, legislative, and judicial. They work together for the common good, but when one steps out of line, as in this case, the executive has underperformed, the city council has to step in as the legislative branch and correct what the executive has not done. I urge you to pass this good resolution and get, and moving on, moving on to complete that jigsaw puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you, George, Kim Schmidt, and after Kim is Becky.
Hello, Kim Schmidt from the Valley. I don't know that I have anything especially poignant to say on it, other than I'm in support of the amended resolution. our police departments stay within their jurisdictions and the negative effects that can have on those literally just trying to survive. I think it's also important to point out the irony of the situation, how, you know, if there's a piece of property that's not within their jurisdiction, how officers and sheriffs and all these people can just go on and try to make it their business when we look at what happens in the city here. And, you know, there was just a, this is a horrible name, and they really should have changed it, but the tent city that occurred this weekend, no police officers showed up to break that up. Could it be because they're college students? I don't know. When those same college students literally light couches on fire and drink alcohol out of open containers on public roads, and officers are telling each other to ignore minor violations, or potentially when we have an issue like TCAP, where a religious cult is allowed to continue on at the detriment of people seeking healthcare services. Those are the things that our local police department and our sheriff's department should be worried about, the things that they control within their jurisdiction. When I think of even like a judge's injunction being granted, and they still won't enforce that, but yet they want to take it upon themselves to go into Camp Hope, that's not okay. And I appreciate the actions that you're taking to make sure that this doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Becky.
Hello, I'm Becky Dickerhoof from the city of Spokane. I am not here tonight representing any group. I am here representing myself, and I want to thank council for putting forth this resolution, which I think addresses several issues which have been occurring across the homeless advocates' concern for the past year. I was part of a group that's been studying homelessness issues in Spokane as we tried to learn more. I was part of a group that sent recommendations to this council with three things. And when the Camp Hope found itself forming, it addressed some of those recommendations perfectly. No, there were a lot of issues, but it did show council what can be done when a community is formed that is allowed to have time to grow and mature within themselves. I was a part of a group that was at Camp Hope registering voters and talking to voters who, since they were able to stay in one spot without moving hour by hour, because they weren't allowed to sit, they got jobs. They were saving money for an apartment, because we all know you cannot get an apartment with one month's salary. So they were working to get out of it. So I want to thank council for helping alleviate some of their fears, because they were afraid. They've been afraid with all the rhetoric that's been coming, that they did not understand and did not know why it was coming. So as an individual, I want to thank you.
Thank you. All right, council commentary. Okay. All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes five to two. And that gets us to the annual budget as amended earlier today or substituted earlier today.
Ordinance C 36345, adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2023, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage.
All right, and we have two people signed up to testify, George Taylor and Becky Dickerhoof. So George and Becky, if you want to make your way up.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. I want to thank the council for rejecting the mayor's idea that American, the federal money from the American Rescue Plan would be diverted to homeless situation. That was not the intent of the federal legislation. Federal legislation was intended to devote millions of dollars to the city of Spokane and the state of Washington to improve affordable housing, not to be diverted into homeless programs, which have been fully addressed tonight. So I thank you for that. It was a good, it was a good idea to reject that bad idea from the mayor. Thank you.
Becky Dickerhoof.
Hello, Becky Dickerhoof from Spokane City. Again, I'm not here representing any group, but as an individual, I worked with two different organizations to advocate for the passage of 1590 for affordable housing. Both groups were thrilled when the state passed it. Both groups were thrilled when the city of Spokane council decided to take advantage of that legislation to advocate for funds for housing. Homelessness is a crisis, but our mayor has also said housing is a crisis in Spokane, and some of the tools we have available to us, we aren't using, but we do have 1590 we can use. While homelessness is an issue beyond measure, without housing, the bridges that we keep hearing, that are being formed by the various shelters, there's nowhere to go. There is no bridge to somewhere if there's no housing. I am amazed at how many empty properties I pass daily, how many empty lots I pass daily. Surely somewhere in our system, we can find a way to turn those into habitable places. And I don't think we can do that without funds, and 1590 is one of the few funds we have in our books. So please, I know finding funding for homelessness shelters is an issue, but I ask you not to use this source of funding when it's meant, the intent was, the intent when I testified before those LD6 legislators was for housing. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Council commentary on the annual budget.
Don't all go at once.
Yeah, she just said, "Don't all go at once." Councilmember Wilkerson is chair of our finance committee, and I'll just recognize both the work of Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Cathcart, who served on the Budget Work Group for council. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. First of all, I really want to say a big thank you to CFO Tanya and to her team, Jessica and Jake, who hung in there with us. This was really challenging this year, as our expenses were going up much faster than our revenue, especially around our labor costs and the issue of housing and where money had been dedicated or identified to step in and help fill some of those gaps. I think it's a good budget, because nobody got what they all wanted. So I think there was some sacrifice on both parts. I'm excited to support this. Councilmember Cathcart will speak, but along with us really putting into writing about rebuilding our reserves and about us doing a mid-year budget review, so we don't wait till the end of the year to know what's going on. I think that will stand us in good stead going forward. We learned some things, and I think in 2023, you'll continue to see us do things differently.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Same as Councilmember Wilkerson, a big thank you to the administration staff, Tanya and your staff. They're obviously great professionals and do great work. And a big thank you to Matt Boston, our finance director for council. Obviously, putting a budget together is a pretty big task. It takes a lot of people doing a lot of work and everybody kind of pulling together. So I appreciate all of that. This is, so this is my third, third budget on council, and it will be barring an unforeseen amendment. It will be the first that I have been able to vote yes on. And just a couple of things on that I will just mention here that gives me the ability to do that. And it's not because this was a perfect budget. It is not. There's certainly things in it that, on my own, I would have crafted differently. Certainly, I assume that would be the case for others up here as well. But I believe it does get us, and this was the ultimate goal, it gets us closer, not perfectly, but closer to a sustainable budget, kind of looking at how we can tweak all kinds of little things to make, pull the little levers to make that happen. But it gets us close. But what really excites me, and what I think is, we have an opportunity right now, is to kind of take it to the next step and create that truly sustainable budget in the next, in the next go. And so there's three things that are going to come after this budget, one of which we'll be voting on tonight, the two others will probably come in January, that I think will put us on a much better track. And those three things are, one, rebuilding our reserves, making sure that we have a robust reserve to protect us and also to keep our bond rating strong. And then the other two items that we're working on and will be bringing forward would involve kind of the process for considering and adopting a supplemental budget mid-year next year. And I think that's really important, because as I said, this gets us closer to a sustainable budget, doesn't quite get us there, and there are a lot of things that we are going to have to fine tune to reduce some of that risk next year. You know, overtime is obviously one, and if you have a supplemental, that gives you the opportunity to really fine tune that for each department and be a little bit more thoughtful in how you do it. Homelessness is another. We are going to continue to have to look for dollars to fund our, the shelter system and other investments in homelessness. And of course, labor contracts, there's increases in the cost of labor, and there's going to be additional contracts that will be coming forward next year and in the years following. And so it's really important that we figure out how to make these numbers work. So that supplemental budget, I think, is going to be really important. And then to aid in all of this, the last piece that I think will help is something the legislature did 10 years ago, and I think we can kind of do our own version of that. And essentially what that says is, so we do a one-year budget in the city of Spokane, and this would essentially require that we look at the projections for expenses and revenues for the following year and make sure that it balances over that two-year period. The legislature did this, they have a two-year budget, biennial budget, and they do it over a four-year period. And this way, you just make sure that your numbers match and you're not putting yourself into an unsustainable situation that you can't keep funding the following year. So I think there is actually a lot here that is worth being really excited about and happy about. There's obviously a lot of things we have to be careful and cautious of and very watchful of, and I know that with the commitment to pursue that supplemental budget next year, we're going to be able to do that. The last thing is, I also believe, and this is my ultimate goal in all of it, and why it's so important to me that we be sustainable in our budgeting, and that is protecting our priorities, because at some point, you're going to have to start making cuts. And at some point, those cuts are going to have to move into your priorities. And for me, my biggest priority is public safety. And obviously, that is one of the biggest parts to local government and one of our biggest expenses. And so if we're not smart upfront today, that is something that we'll have to be sacrificing down the road. And I just don't want to see us be put in that situation. So I would rather make the good and the hard decisions today to protect us from those tomorrow. But even despite all of that, we still are able to put a little bit more into public safety in this budget, and I think that there will be some positives that come out of that. So I'll leave it there. I will be voting yes on this budget. And I also want to thank Councilman Wilkerson and Council President Beggs and the budget team for all of their help as well, so.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. And thank yous all around. I really want to thank Matt, because he's able to break things down in English so that we can all, you know, understand it and makes us look really smart. So Matt, thank you. And certainly Jake and Jessica have been great on this as well. So little background, I've been concerned about the fire and police overtime for quite a while. Both Councilmember Stratton and I got in the thick of it a couple of years ago and found out more than we really wanted to know. But nonetheless, it was a huge problem then. So for this budget, fire and police have been given more resources than ever in this amended budget, while adding additional nine traffic officer positions. So the public has been clamoring for more traffic officers, because cars racing through our neighborhoods is a real problem. And of course, road rage, and, you know, we all know about that. We've increased positions for fire based on SFDs and Local 29's requests, which we're told will solve our overtime crisis and decrease burnout amongst our firefighters. We've provided critical position reallocations for police based on strategy changes that were identified by SPD leadership as necessary to reduce their overall overtime costs. And on top of these structural changes, we've been more than doubled both fire and police uniform overtime budgets from last year. So the overtime budget's been doubled, not just their budget, but the overtime budget. Going forward, there should be no requests for additional overtime funding in 2023. Council's approved both departments' personnel requests, and we've been assured these changes will mitigate the overtime problem that has burdened the general fund for years and that structural gap that has occurred year after year. So fingers crossed, we've been assured this is going to happen. I'm going to be a stickler for this. You thought I was grinch last year on overtime? If we go over it this time, there's, you'll hear me yelling all the way to California. So thank you, Councilmember Cathcart, for bringing forth those three considerations for us, because I think that will get us to a point where we can perhaps breathe a sigh of relief that we're not going to bankrupt the city. So thank you for that. Councilmember Wilkerson, thank you for your leadership on the finance committee. That's been a Herculean effort, so we appreciate you. We appreciate you, Councilmember, oops, sorry, Council President Beggs. So thank you all. And yes, of course, I'm going to be supporting this.
Councilmember Stratton.
I would like to, of course, I say all the same thank yous to the folks inside City Hall, but a really big thank you to the public, who, if you could just sit in any of our offices and read the emails that we get on a daily basis. I've got more emails regarding this budget, specifically the 1590 funds, that it was wonderful to see so many people watching that and concerned about that. And on days when you get so mired down in the negative and the issues with homelessness and housing, it kind of brought me back to realizing that we have a pretty compassionate community, and I am so happy to have that support, that those 1590 funds go to affordable housing. That's what it was meant for. We've waited a long time, and we're ready for this. So thank you all, and thanks for those that sent emails, and that just really kind of stuck to that point of, we care about people, we want people to live in homes that are affordable, and I think it made a, it made a big difference with me anyway, so thank you.
Councilmembers of Pough.
Yeah, thank you again, everyone, and I will also be supporting this. And the one thing that I think is important to highlight, that Councilmember Kinnear touched on, and Councilmember Cathcart touched on, is public safety and how important it is to every member of this council. And I think it's important to point out that council is approving a budget today that is higher than the administration's proposed budget for the police. So we are increasing the number of police officers, while the administration did not propose any increases in police officers, and overall funding is higher than what the administration proposed. So I just wanted to highlight that, because public safety is incredibly important to this council.
Councilmember Ringel, any thoughts?
I've got some. I got some. I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it brief, though. Yeah, I think the, my biggest concern was the overtime for police and fire, and I'm glad that we got to a place to where we are accounting for the increased overtime. You know, this is my first year, our first year, but one of the things we've heard over and over is, you know, that it's constantly over budget. And so the fact that we were able to get there, I think, is really important. So for all, for all the budget team and CFO and everybody worked on it, I think that's, that's where we needed to be. So that's, that was my biggest concern, and we got it squared away, so.
All right, any other comments before I give my last? So this is my seventh budget that I've been on the Budget Work Group, and I feel like we were the most effective this year than we've ever been. And we owe that to both engaged council members, but also our budget director, Matt Boston from council, and then really, there's a team of three people in the administration and Mr. Boston, who work together very closely. And as been mentioned, Jessica Stratton, Jake Miller, and Michelle Murray. So we need to call out, Michelle has been at the city a long time. And what I was struck by is despite some of the media narratives out there of disagreements between the administration and council, they work together so well, and they were always on the same page. They, you know, their bosses might not have agreed with each other, but they always did. And that was great. It was great to have such professionals and really give us the data that we needed. You know, we have an ever-growing budget, because our community members demand ever-growing service. services. That's just the thing. And particularly this year, it's already been mentioned, but we usually try to keep our labor contracts under 3% per year because that's about what our revenue growth is on average. This year, it was 5% the labor contracts, and that is super challenging. That's millions and millions of dollars. We had to figure out how to obtain in revenues or in cost-cutting, moving things around. And the bad news is there's another 4% to 5% increase across the board next year, and we don't know how we're going to deal with that. But as Councilmember Cathcart mentioned, we did our best this year to set ourselves up for next year. And one of the things, you know, the budget that we were handed in early November went into the red compared to revenues by, I think, $2.6 million. And we were just going to, the proposal was just take that out of our savings account. We have reversed that, and so now we're not going into the red in terms of revenues, and it looks like a modest surplus of $200,000. And we hope that with our mid-year correction, we'll continue to grow that surplus so that we can have a fighting chance in the budget that we prepare for 2024. We, you know, we had several methods for dealing with things. One of them was when we looked at fire, we added a lot of positions because we could save on overtime if we had those positions. And they recruited their academies. It seems like they're getting a pretty good uptake. On police, we've approved far more positions than they could ever hire this year, and they've told us they're just not going to be able to. So we took some of the savings, we called that a contra account, and we used that $600,000 and put it into overtime so that we have, because we substantially increased the actual budget for overtime, so there are no surprises like there were this year. And so that's exactly what we did. We know we can't hire all those people, they just won't come to work for us now, and so we did that. And as mentioned, you know, we are spending $7.568 million on, or increase on law enforcement up from the mayor's proposal of $7.318. But we did it differently. One of the things that mystifies me is that we know that you're more likely to be killed by illegal driving than being shot or stabbed. And the department continues to want to emphasize just regular patrol, not traffic, and they decommissioned the traffic unit. And along with people complaining about it, actually, people are dying. So I feel really good about giving the police department the authority, if they want it, we can't make them, hire nine traffic officers that are going to be focused on parks and schools in our most vulnerable parts of our neighborhoods to reduce that epic death rate that's out there from illegal driving. We also solved a fight we've been having for a while with the police department, which was how to fund youth intervention and anti-drug work. We know that that leads to all these drug overdoses and all those things, and that we need to deal with that. We were looking, some of us, a majority of us, were looking to the forfeiture fund for that, which had a lot of resistance, but we've made a transition this time to, we're still going to fund the amounts spent from our cannabis funds for police investigations, which we've done every year, but we're going to cap that at what they've been spending. And any increase in that, which we will have a significant increase next year, we believe, will now go into youth intervention, hopefully peer-led by people who have been there but gotten over it. And so I think we have that figured out. We asked the police chief if he would be willing to make that deal, not giving up anything, but just giving up the future for us not going after those funds in the forfeiture account. And so we've solved that. We've, you know, it's a complex budget. We have a media release that will go out, they'll have some of the highlights on it. Someone told me, I don't know if it was, 1,000 pages. I read it, each page, and figured out a lot of places where there was some money that hadn't been identified. The other piece, we found more money than ever historically from our local funds for homelessness services, and we still need way more, hopefully from other partners. But I'm really probably happiest about preserving the 1590 funds, $7 million for permanently affordable housing. That's how we're really going to solve homelessness, and we were able. It was really challenging because there wasn't, the administration wanted to fund homeless services, and that was their preferred route. And in the short term, it might have worked, but in the long term, to me, would have been disastrous because we've spent way too much money on shelters because we haven't spent the money on the actual permanent housing. And so we need to do that. A call out to my friends in the city of Spokane Valley and the commissioners at Spokane County that if they would pass their version of 1590, that would add probably another $10 million a year, every year, for permanently affordable housing. And it's just one tenth of a percent on the sales tax, then we would have the same, essentially the same sales tax, so that would put that aside, and that would probably do more to resolve homelessness than anything that I can imagine that we've been talking about. So I really appreciate all the work of everybody and all the engagement. The public, you've been great at the hearings, tons of you have come out and testified over the last month, and look forward to the administration's implementation of it expertly, as they usually do. And then, but as Councilmember Cathcart mentioned, we'll be back to work shortly to get the mid-year correction. And one of the things, the last thing I was just going to mention, I should have mentioned it earlier, but in terms of controlling budgets on police, police right now is just in the general fund, which means if they go over budget, they can just take money from other programs, unlike the fire department, which has its own fund. They have to live within that, and so we're going to look at having the police the same as the fire next year, so that they are contained within that. We can always put more money in it, but they would have to come to council to do that. So I think if they continue their hard work of managing their budget, just like fire, we won't have a surprise and have to make unexpected cuts at the end. And with that, prepare to vote. All right, 7-0 vote. Congratulations, council members. We still have more work to do tonight.
Ordinance C36346, establishing requirements for unallocated reserve balances within the general fund and acting a new section within Article 7.08.010G of the Spokane municipal code.
All right, there's no one from the public signed up for that. Councilmember Cathcart, you've kind of mentioned it, but if you want to tee it up a little bit more?
Yeah, thank you. So essentially, what this does is kind of like I mentioned before, it really just puts us on a path to refilling our reserves. The number that Matt Boston had come up with, that we best felt that the bond ratings agencies wanted to see was 25%. And so essentially, what this says is that over a five-year period, we need to be putting a minimum of 2% a year into reserves to get us back to that 25% threshold. The one caveat is if there is like a dip in the sales tax receipts, like the economy is having a recession or some sort of dip, we can pause that because obviously, these are meant to be reserves and something that we can rely upon. And if we're in an emergency situation, this shouldn't be detracting from our ability to support that. So yeah, I think it'll be a very beneficial thing for us to have going forward.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Did you mention the relationship to the bond rating? I'm sorry. So, and it's not just about the city of Spokane getting an A+, but it's about our viability as a city and people wanting to invest here if we have a good bond rating.
Right, and that's a great point. And it was shared with us, too, that whether it's corporate entities or others, they do look at the bond ratings to see if a city is a good place for them to locate or invest. So it does have a bearing on that, but obviously, it has a big bearing on the cost of debt to the city and the taxpayers for us if that bond rating were to fall or end up below where it should be, so.
Any other council commentary?
All right, prepare to vote. All right, and that passes 7 to 0. All right, I'll let Ms. Fister read this after I just tee this up a little bit, but we have a special consideration to continue our full council conversation about landlord/tenant ordinance, C36330. We're not taking any action on it tonight, in terms of a final vote. And once she's read it, I'm going to ask council members Stratton and Cathcart to tell us what they're up to, because after our last meeting, we decided we were going to get more public engagement, looking towards a January 23rd vote on whatever version of the ordinance is amended at that point. But you can go ahead and read the title of it, Ms. Fister.
Okay. S1, consideration of updated ordinance, C36330, establishing a local program for assisting landlords and tenants in Spokane, enacting a new chapter 10.57 and new section 7.08.145 and 7.08.150, and amending sections 7.08.139, 8.01.160, 8.01.195, and 8.02.0206 of the Spokane municipal code.
All right, I will turn it over first to councilmembers Stratton and Cathcart, and then other commentary from anyone else.
Well, we don't have any dates yet in concrete. That's something we're working on this week, but the goal is we are going to meet with a group of landlord developer folks, as well as another group of tenants, and kind of continue that conversation. In addition to that and those ongoing conversations, Councilmember Bingle and myself, and I'm hoping to be joined by others, are looking to have some sort of a public town hall in early to mid-January to have just another opportunity for folks to chime in and share their concerns or thoughts or ideas. You know, one of the big things that I said is, to me, there's a little bit of a disconnect in my brain around kind of the conversations that have been going on for the last four years, which has been mentioned a few times, and what was kind of in this ordinance specifically that's currently on the table. And so trying to figure out what exactly is the specific problems we're trying to solve, and then coming up with the best solutions that will have the least negative impact on our rental market in the city of Spokane. So that's my overall goal, but I think to get there, we have to have those communications in an open way that people can share with us exactly what the problems are and how we can achieve those. So that's my hope with Councilman Stratton, and I don't know if there's other pieces to that.
I would just say that this is another issue that's getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of feedback on. We're getting lots of emails on, from individuals that feel that they want to participate, they hadn't had an opportunity to do so before. So those are the emails that we're really looking at. We've met with the Landlord Association to get some names of individuals that would be good representation of most of the concerns that the landlords have. The next will be talking to the tenants' union to get a list from them of individuals that could represent that industry. So I think we're moving it along, and we're being very cognizant of those individuals that feel that they have something to add and they want to be part of the process, so that's what we're planning on.
And haven't been able to yet, or they haven't felt like they've been able to be a part of it yet. And that's for both sides. I mean, there's obviously tenants with a lot of lived experience, they can share a lot of things. And then certainly, you know, you want to get the landlord's perspective on what is doable and what is going to have, you know, the most positive impact and the least negative impact, and there's always unintended consequences. So just trying to work through that and have a good dialogue and get to something, because obviously, there will be a vote of some kind on the 23rd, so making it something that's the best of all worlds.
Councilmember Kinnear?
So my question is, we have a working document that Council President put forward. Councilmember Stratton, you and I had some changes that we wanted to saw. Can you talk a little bit, which, you're going to use that working document, and then at what point do we say, at what point do you introduce some of the things that you and I were talking about, changes that we'd like to see?
My thinking is, is, and we kind of talked about this, is that we would use this tonight, that's the working document, but that some of those ideas, I've already sent them to Councilmember Cathcart, and that those would become part of that discussion as we work with both groups to say, you know, here's what we came up with, what do you think about this? I don't know if you want to add to that, but we really want to use that as a tool to kind of start bringing up those changes.
You and I used your document to craft what we wanted to see as changes. So there's a lot of iterations on this.
Which is why I thought it was so good that we just both worked together and tried to bring those groups and say.
And this one has Legal's perspective in it.
Correct. So we've got Legal, we've got this one, we've got Legal input, we've got your input, my input, the changes, your input, we'll get more input, and then tonight, this will be on special considerations approved, and that's what we work from, right?
Yeah, technically, we would have to make an amendment to make that the base document and then do that, which we're not voting on that tonight.
Right, yeah.
Any other comments from other council members? I'm just going to add a couple things, just for the good of everybody here and anyone watching, is City Legal has some more comments coming, so James Richman's working on it now, so we've been in dialoguing about some things. The second thing is, you know, there isn't actually much regulation in this. There's some people who think, oh, there's a bunch of regulations, there's just not. What there really is, is there's a bunch of programs in it, for the most part, in my judgment, and then there's, you know, how do you pay for them? There's some extra fees in there for larger landlords. But we have been talking, Councilmember Stratton and I, and Kinnear and I, when we were on the council, when we set aside a bunch of money for this issue to help fund programs for landlord tenants. And then we found out earlier this year that whether we just weren't aware of it when it happened, but anyways, a million dollars or so of that was spent on some other things. And I've asked for an accounting on it, I've gotten the first spreadsheet with it, but I need some more information about it because I'm a little unclear about it. Because we wanted to fund the fund for tenant relocation and Legal to help them, we wanted to fund the landlord mitigation fund, and there were some different things that we've been talking about doing, funding code enforcement that's dedicated specifically for these issues under state law. So we've been talking about that, but it turns out that we have found some more money from that strategic fund that's out there. We would have to repurpose it from some other priorities that was out there. But I look forward to having that discussion, because I think a lot of times when something new comes up, people, you know, their mind goes to the worst possible outcome, and what they want to see is, okay, are you really going to invest in us? And so landlords that have been willing to rent to people with a challenged history because they are working with a nonprofit agency now to have a backup fund in case, that rare case that it doesn't work out when one of those, and again, for tenants, and again, not a frequent case, but when it is, it's devastating, when they find themselves in a place where a landlord's not keeping it habitable, and they have to, in their mind, choose between staying in an inhabitable place but at least having a roof over their heads of sorts, or complaining and then losing their place and not having the funds to relocate. So we're going to try to alleviate that with those kind of funds. And so the next time when we come on the 23rd, hopefully, we'll have that sorted out so we'll be able to tell people, yes, we are going to have these funds and do that. And then the other piece is hopefully, we'll hear from the administration, their financial analysis of, you know, landlords are supposed to be already purchasing business licenses under state law at the city. We've been, the city's been lax on enforcing that, but, so there's a certain amount of money, $127 a year, it's not a huge amount, but that money right now is just going into the general fund. And what we're basically saying is landlords, at your request, we will let you keep a large portion of that fund to fund code enforcement to go against the landlords that all the landlords and realtors are telling me, hey, there's a handful of people that are causing all the problems, let's focus code enforcement on that. Code enforcement hasn't had money. We'll let you essentially redirect your share of your annual business license towards the issue that you care about. We don't do that for our businesses very often, but this is a bit of a crisis. So it's essentially redirecting that amount that they would have to pay anyway, and then we're going to debate the per-door thing for people over four units. But most of that code enforcement is going to be funded by the annual license that any business has to do. So I just wanted to throw that out for the conversation. And anything else anyone wants to say before we move to open forum?
Yeah. Just the last part is, I think- Just the last part is, I think the other group that we want to hear from, and I know we're all kind of talking to them, but is just generally staff, and just figuring out exactly how a program could work and work well for them. I've heard a couple of different things from concerns from staff just over this, and just figuring out, how do we make sure that we have enough resources to do what's in an ordinance that we pass? Or, and probably more my preference, how do we focus the ordinance to make sure that it meets the resources that we do have and go after the people that we really need to focus on? You know, it's kind of like an option between spreading it over everything or really just focusing where you know you have the biggest problem as a priority. So I think that's all, again, all part of the conversation that we want to have in terms of putting something together and making it be something that hopefully is effective in terms of what it does.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. I'm with some glee anticipating your town hall that you'll have because I've done many of them, and they can be challenging, but I know you guys are up to it, and I appreciate it, the spreading the burden. I think one of the good things about this process in the last four years, we've had several different processes, and we've spread the understanding to it. And the truth is, we've got some new council members since the last time we were really intensely doing it, and so that will help us all be better decision-makers. With that, we're going to move to open forum. We have 12 people signed up tonight, and I'm going to start, if he's on the phone, is Dave, Em? Okay. Not seen you, Dave, but I'm sure we'll see you at our next meeting. Then I'm going to call on Justice for All first, and then Christine Quinn, and then Sandy Nichols.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Spokane Police Department has not improved for the last two years and are still consistently one of the deadliest police forces in the nation per capita. Spokane police have stopped responding to some calls and have no trouble finding probable cause for people they dislike, including advocates for the unhoused. Over the past 10 special budget ordinances requested by police in 2022, you have approved every single one, $11.3 million. How has the most inflated budget have such bad money management that $11.3 million has been requested under emergency, and that's only for this year? So many people and service providers have stories that their calls are not being responded to by the SPD. I have talked about the need for data tracking for police and dispatchers, but I see a recent resolution was passed to have, to add classified police dispatchers eight, or from zero to eight. So it sounds like we're getting further, we're getting less transparency. If someone is refusing to do their job, buying them news toys is ridiculous. If they aren't answering calls, they aren't doing their duty. Why give them a blank check to a group that has already such a bloated budget? That's why, sorry, I'm not supposed to say that part. Additionally, I came to speak about how our unhoused community is treated by police and by private security forces like Catholic Charities Neighborhood Safety Team. My first question, it's to you all, is how does sweeping people end homelessness? Spokane Police Department is in charge of sweeping the downtown corridor, and they have a culture of cruelty, not just sweeping people and causing situations of desperation, but doing so when weather conditions are most extreme. In the summer, pushing people out into the, of shade daily at 1:30 p.m., and during the winter, removing items and telling them to move along when there's no place for them to go. SPD doesn't just sweep, they sweep to punish. SPD doesn't allow the same measure of probable cause to the poor. If you are poor, and you are guilty first, and at the will of the police officers who will berate you, make condescending comments about where you're from and where you're at. They make claims about your mental health, drug history, warrant history, and potential histories of violence to whoever is listening. Tons of allegations are made by these officers, but is it their job to tell random people disparaging remarks about people they work and serve? Private security forces from transit security to Catholic Charities Neighborhood Safety Team also treat people in a very punitive first measure, finding excuses to trespass, bully, and harass, berate, and insult people daily. Sorry. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Justice. All right. Christine Quinn.
Want me to go ahead?
Well.
Okay. She wants me to go ahead.
Okay. And you're Sandy, or no, who are you?
My name's Sandy Nichols, and I am from West Hills. Thank you. For the record, let's be clear. Rob McCann from Catholic Charities, surrounded by his supporters and the governor, made it official for the first time last week. There is a crime wave now coming to West Hills, and it is coming because of their catalyst shelter. He made it clear at the grand opening that a wave of criminals, human traffickers, and drug dealers is coming, and to protect the shelter and his residents, he's erecting fences, installing facial recognition cameras, and hiring armed security guards to patrol the shelter's perimeter 24 hours a day. They've had to build an armed fortress to protect themselves from what they brought with them. But he never told our neighborhood this crime wave was coming, not once since they bought the place. But why should that surprise us? We were never informed by him that the shelter was coming either. So why should we expect him to act in good faith and warn us about any kind of crime wave? Let's be clear here, he never reached out to us about either, never in both cases. We had to read about the shelter in the newspaper, and now we had to wait for the shelter to open last week to find out that there is a toxic entourage of criminals, human traffickers, and drug dealers headed our way. Question: If they have to turn their shelter into an armed fortress to protect themselves, what are we supposed to do in the neighborhood? So for now, and for the record, the crime wave is coming, and Catholic Charities is bringing it with them, and they themselves say so. And all this in spite of their declarations of transparency and wanting to work with the community and wanting to address any of our concerns or grievances, they have never reached out to us for feedback of any kind or advised us what to do about a problem that is going to infect the whole neighborhood. In fact, two months ago, they personally sent me a cease and desist order when they thought I was warning my neighbors. They told me to stop making inflammatory and reckless statements. Yet last week, Catholic Charities announced it was coming, indeed. So my question to you, city council members, did Catholic Charities warn you about this crime wave McMahon described? Because now we know that they knew about it all along. And like they did to us, did they not bother to tell you about it either? So answer me this, is Catholic Charities, is this their way of doing business, and is this the way we can expect Catholic Charities to conduct themselves in the future? They've raved about their new shelter, but I don't see much concern for my neighborhood, not if they're attracting a toxic entourage like McMahon described. What we want to know is, after McMahon's revelation, are we now to become a disposable neighborhood in some kind of crisis corridor that belongs to Catholic Charities and not West Hills? Is that what we are to expect for our future? And city council, if we're not a disposable neighborhood, what are you going to do to help us? And are you going to help us grow and thrive? Or is everyone going to rubber stamp this introduction of crime and squalor into our neighborhood?
Thanks for coming down, Sandy. And Christine. And after Christine is, looks like Stuart Lee, and then Kim Schmidt.
Hi. Thank you for, um, I've kind of lost my voice, so I'm going to try my best on this. So I'm kind of just going to talk about an update on our neighborhood. So we had developers with plans for $100 million in development, and then Catholic Charities purchased three properties. They came to a meeting, neighborhood council meeting, and stated that they would be completely forthcoming. This is in notes that we have on whatever they were going to do. And they weren't, as you know. July 22nd, everybody learned from the spokesman review. And I shouldn't even say everybody. Many of you may know we had a protest in front of the catalyst, and a lot of people were stopping and asking, and people were coming down from the neighborhood that knew absolutely nothing. And that is what is so amazing, is how many people still don't know. And it's, I mean, it's just, we have bridges crumbling. We have bridges that are failing, and Department of Transportation, it's kind of like we've been forsaken by everybody, the state. And, you know, it's kind of what's a neighborhood to do. We don't have a coffee shop. We don't have a meeting place. When our groups meet, our neighborhood council meets at the library, and we, there's not a place in our neighborhood where people can meet. And we were close to having that, and we lost it. And, you know, and the other thing is, you have this hotel, and you had two developers that wanted to purchase it and restore it. The restaurant at the top, the Spokane House, my husband's parents were engaged there, and apparently it had the best view in Spokane, and that was going to be restored. You had two parties that wanted to do that, two separate. And it's, why is this happening to us? And as Betsy knows, and all our parallels, we now get Camp Hope. Though apparently Camp Hope doesn't want to come, so I think we're going to mostly end up with the House of Charities. And $8,000 per resident per month, and that's it. Oh, but, and Karen, I know you have a special place for Ascendia. We're having a Christmas party for the kids there and bringing them gifts.
Christine, we're at the end of your three minutes.
Oh, I'll email everyone.
All right. Thanks for coming down.
About that, thanks.
And Stuart.
I should say, I'm sorry, I just want to say our West Hills Neighborhood Council is having the Christmas party.
Okay, thanks. Stuart Lee, after Stuart is going to be Zach McCuckin, and then Scott Ward by video. Welcome.
Thank you, Stuart Lee from Spokane and West Hills. I'm here to speak again about the sacrifice of the West Hills neighborhood to Catholic charities and their money grab from state and federal taxpayers. The Catalyst Project is now open. 100 homeless people are going to be housed at the expense of our community. How much money? $9.4 million to purchase and remodel the building, $94,000 per person. I've heard as much as eight, but five million minimum operating costs annually, $50,000 per person to run the shelter. I read, and George, who's gone, I read earlier this year that there are 1,400 homeless people in Spokane. Times $50,000 per person to house them, that is $70 million annually. George said there's 14,000. That's $700 million a year that the taxpayers of Spokane County are going to have to spend to house. There are 227,877 housing units in Spokane County. If there are, in fact, 14,000 homeless people, that's $3,071 per housing unit to support that. That means every single mom that rents an apartment and works two jobs is going to have to pay more. Catholic charities, whose CEO makes $330,000 a year as a base salary, has purchased other properties in the West Hills. Soon, we will have many hundreds more homeless people living in our neighborhood. However, the other neighborhoods fared? South Hill? Zero, as far as I can tell. North Side? Zero. Wandermere? Zero. Spokane Valley? Catholic charity structure out there has been an extreme hotbed of crime, and the sheriff's call log is proof of that. Many of us believe that that will be the fate of the West Hills. There's not a lack of compassion by the citizens who live in the West Hills. We have halfway houses, we have transitional housing, we have a fair amount of low-income housing out there also. We're just working-class folks who want a safe community and our roads plowed. Like most of America, we have lots of neighbors that live paycheck to paycheck. Asking that same single mom to not feed her family or pay her rent so a homeless person can have a nice apartment is unacceptable. Take note of the two shuttle buses the city sent to camp to take people to the shelters, and they got two people to get on the buses. On the news, two folks got on the bus. People who want to change their lives can be helped. Statistically, about 70% of those are just looking for a free life handed to them by the producers of our community. When I was 12 years old, my family of six lived in a 22-foot travel trailer. I would suggest that a $20,000 travel trailer and a $20,000 pickup truck for each homeless person would end our crisis.
Stuart, thanks for coming down.
Thanks. And Merry Christmas.
All right. Thank you. Stu. Zach McCuckin, I'm probably saying your name wrong a little bit, so feel free to introduce yourself and where you're from.
You got it, actually.
Okay.
I'm impressed.
All right. And then after Zach is going to be Scott Ward by video, and then Kim Schmidt.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zachary McCuckin, and I live in Spokane. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, but I'm speaking on behalf of a broader coalition of organizations that are fighting to support all those living in East Central, the people in Camp Hope and the people in the community around it. When Sheriff Ozzy spoke on Fox News in the midst of the many lies he told about that situation, including
Council President, was this on our agenda today?
I don't know that he's, I, so
I'm not speaking to the policy that's on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm speaking towards the residents of Camp Hope's
Okay.
And the central community's attitude towards the city's actions.
I got you. So it seems like you understand the rules, so just be clear on steering where, the lane you need to be in. Thank you. Continue.
Yeah, so he described a conversation he had with a family in East Central stating that they were feeling feelings of terror and a lack of safety. Because of all the lies he told in that segment, he's proved himself to be an untrustworthy source, and the people of East Central have their own voices. So a group of us figured that we should let them speak for theirselves. Over the course of a few weeks, we door-knocked on every door within a mile radius of Camp Hope and had conversations with many of the people in the neighborhood. And yes, there is fear and anger in the community, but the most prominent sentiment is people want Camp Hope to no longer be necessary. The majority of each Central residence we spoke to understood that, as one resident explicitly stated to me, it's not them versus Camp Hope, but them and Camp Hope versus a city that refuses to address homelessness. And so the following is just quotes from people in East Central. "I don't like our neighborhood on the national news because we have the largest homeless camp in the nation. I don't like the bickering between the city and state. I find the city is more at fault and could have done more sooner. I don't like the sheriff's threat of breaking up the camp without first ensuring all residents have a place to go other than back into our neighborhood." So that's all one quote. "On our block, there are six houses, and it has about $1,500 per house of property damage. Two houses have significantly more in damages. Some of those losing their homeowner's insurance, which could lead to them losing their homes, and all of this because of Camp Hope. However, I'm certain a lot of people at Camp Hope are decent people in a bad situation. I feel for them. They deserve better. They deserve help and happiness. We have allowed the campers to be," that's one quote, "we have allowed the campers to be as they are. We wish for them to have a safe place to live, and no disbanding the camp will just spread out the encampment to lots of other land. They are currently in a location that has been accommodated to best assist everyone and should be allowed to stay until a real long-term solution has been agreed to. Many people in the suburbs spend money and support in order to keep these problems in poor neighborhoods."
Zach, we're at the end of your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. We're going to go to Scott Ward by video, and then after Scott, we're going to have William Hewling, and then Rick Bochuk. Scott, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. So welcome to city council. You have up to three minutes.
All right. Thank you. I'm Scott Ward. I'm from Spokane Valley, and I'm talking also about the importance of allowing Camp Hope to come to a organic closure where people are served rather than forcing and sweeping it away. Since May 2021, I've been volunteering
Point of order, council president.
Is this Just a second, Scott.
Oh, give me, okay.
Is this not on the resolution that we were, I mean, it's on the same issue?
I don't know if it has to do with the police. So Scott, we did a resolution earlier that was saying we don't want the city to participate in such a sweep, so just please stay participate in such a sweep, so just please stay away from city participation, and I think you'll be okay.
Okay. Um, all right. I'll try to focus on, on that. Okay, so I, I've been a member of Spokane Community Against Racisms, Burritos for the People program during meal prep and outreach. Um, I've helped serve vulnerable communities, especially those who are unhoused. Since Camp Hope was established about a year ago, I've been leading the burrito outreach to our neighbors at the camp. In this role, I've seen firsthand the progress toward permanent housing solutions pursued at Camp Hope and community members and the service providers on site. And so I just want to, you know, commend you all for, you know, again, supporting efforts to, to not allow that to be disrupted. Um, you know, I, I just kind of also want people to realize that what I've seen at Camp Hope is very welcoming, kind-hearted, smart, caring, and creative humans. Um, you know, not that people are perfect, but, you know, you know, these are human beings that are, um, that have a lot of great qualities, and that's what I've kind of seen firsthand. So we need to continue to support them and expand our support, um, and, you know, not just with what we're doing, but expanding on the efforts that are, that are going on with the service providers there and providing additional funds to help them find, you know, pathways to permanent housing. You know, I think too long in Spokane, but also just the, the United States in general, we've treated homelessness as, as a, a problem to criminalize, uh, which I know you guys have spoken against on sweeping Camp Hope.
I think he continues to talk about the sweep of the camp and...
Scott, can you be more general?
Yeah.
Because it, it could be interpreted that you're actually testifying about what we did earlier, so...
Okay. That's, that's fair. So I, I guess in general, I would, I would advocate for increasing, uh, the amount of funds that are available and, um, you know, again...
And just, I'm just a play lawyer with you. That was right in our resolution, was to increase that. So I know that we added that at the very last minute, but, so...
Okay. Uh, would it be okay to talk about general, uh, general funds for affordable housing, or would that be not as well?
Yeah. No, I think that's fine. We're just, I would stay away from Camp Hope at this point.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, I think for, what we're looking for here is, is to be creative and innovative with our general housing policy for Spokane. Spokane's housing affordability crisis has skyrocketed in the last few years. It's been much more expensive to live here. For instance, you know, it's really affordability with rent that is...
Scott, now, Scott, now we're, now we're at the end of your time, but I just want to thank you for your participation, and I'll just, next, I, you probably testified before, and I just don't remember it exactly, but if there is something on the agenda that you're really, is sign up for that one. And then open forum is really for something that's completely different that you want to bring to our attention, so, but, but I appreciate, I appreciate...
Okay. That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate you waiting around and participating.
And quickly, I just wanted to say to him, it looked like he had something written out, so if he wants to email that to us, then he can, and we can hear exactly what he wrote.
Yeah. Also, feel free to email us. We've got a button on our website, and it goes to all of us. So, thanks, thanks again.
Will do.
And thanks for all you do.
Bye.
All right. William, I think we have you next. And after William is gonna be Rick Bowkuk, and then Crystal Burgett, Burgett?
Good evening.
Welcome, William.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Will. I live downtown Spokane. Uh, yes, last week, I didn't speak at a city council meeting. I just sat and observed very peacefully. But someone decided to call during open forum and, without mentioning my name, I know they were referring to me, but you've seen me here. So, I'm gonna read this again. This was filed March 5th, 2020, Spokane County District Court, State of Washington. Um, these, well, I'm just gonna read this. "The court finds by preponderance of evidence that the court has waived the free speech rights of the respondent," that's me, "and ultimately finds that the conduct described broadly falls within the limits of protected political speech. The court takes note that most of the conduct described takes place at City Hall," that's here, "or outside City Hall," it's right outside, "and also at locations in which groups with opposing political views gather." Okay? "This distinction is crucial in the court's analysis of time, place, and manner when determining what level of protection to assign the respondents my free speech rights." So last week, while I was sitting here, someone decided because they feel that people are talking the way I am, with a raised voice. That's just how I speak. And I'm not very happy, because it seems like it's going back to the old, the, the old two years ago, when I was attacked at city council. That's not gonna happen again. Tonight, it happened again. People turning their backs and thinking they're gonna flip me off? Well, they're gonna get flipped off too. I'm not playing this. They've tried to ruin my name, and you helped them, Brian Beggs. You too, Keneer.
Can you just, you, you address me? No, that's fine. You can address me, but don't address me in my house.
And I've already said I, we need to get to the end of this. But it's sick. I don't, I'm being attacked, and it's not gonna happen. So I'm just letting you know, I'm gonna be speaking about this every time it happens, because they got a bigot. You know what a bigot is? I should read the definition. I'm being attacked by hate bigots. Yeah.
All right. Thanks for coming down. Rick Bowkuk. After Rick, Crystal.
Yeah, we're talking about you, Kim.
Mr. Huling, please don't be disruptive. And, um, after Mr. Bowkuk is Crystal Burgett, and then Kim Schmidt.
Boy, earlier today, I got, I got flashbacks to the 60s and to the 70s. You know, um, what was her name? I can't remember her name. It was a little hand that said, "The sky is falling." I got to hear that today. And the other one reminded me of the kinks. "Paranoia will destroy you." "There's a little yellow man underneath my bed." I got to hear that tonight, and so I'm flashing really heavy on this stuff. It's kind of humorous to me, because I was raised in, you know, I mean, I think one of these people here is part of Hilliard, Dogtown. I was raised in Dogtown. And I think about, um, when people talk about they don't want other people in their neighborhood, I think about Dogtown, and it was like, it was like a ghetto. Poverty, extreme poverty, even though people were working for the Red Dog. So when I hear people, "I don't want anybody in my neighborhood," I'm thinking, damn, what if he was in a neighborhood in the 60s like that, where you're stuck there? You know, and, and you're gonna take whatever comes your way, and be, and be glad that the person's friendly. But I, I just hear this paranoia, and I'm thinking, darn, why are these people so paranoid? They're so paranoid that they're hateful. You guys are gonna have a crime wave. A big crime wave. It's garbage. You're gonna have no crime wave. The crime waves aren't, it's, I don't like to hear this stuff, but it's garbage. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Crystal, thanks for coming down.
Crystal Yosko Som-Burgett, Spokane, Washington. I am here for a couple things. I've noticed a pattern with kids and teens that are often listed as runaways. A month or more later, they end up getting listed as missing. I'm noticing this is a repeat, uh, problem that happens, and it's giving just, um, it's just giving a crack for these kids to fall in, and so we need to, um, do something about that. I think that we can do better and come up with a quicker response for these kids before they're actually missing, even if, um, how we, the verbiage that we use is what matters. And so these kids are getting left behind, so I have concerns about that, because over the last year, we have five total kids. Four out of five are BIPOC ages ranging from 14 to 17 years old. Gage Martin, Justin Justice, Michelle, Leandra Peterson, Alexa Jo Plu, and Marisol Carreras-Lopez are their five names that we have listed on the missing persons, um, on our Spokane Missing Persons. So I wanted to bring that up again. Um, another thing I wanted to bring up and put on the record is a lot of people that are either deaf or have audio, um, what do you call it? Audio processing disorders have a hard time in these chambers when we can't hear, we can't always comprehend what is being said by you guys or even the speakers. And so I wanted to put it out there that this is a problem. So there's that. And then, um, I had a gentleman that, um, I met outside. I was just helping him with some foods, and he gave, he was here too late to sign up, but he gave me his name and asked to say a little bit of his story of what his experience was at the Trent Shelter. One was, the bathroom was, um, completely unsanitary. He had to be admitted to the hospital due to unsanitary conditions, and he was known to go outside and go to the bathroom outside of the facility. They often run out of food supplies or provide minimal nutritious meals to their persons, which is an issue. He complained about not being able to, um, smoke cigarettes during certain hours of the day. And then another thing is, he had stated that there was employees there that are going on and cussing and yelling at the people...
Crystal, I'm, I'm not trying to stop you for being negative, but we're at the end of your time.
Okay.
But I really appreciate you coming down, and I just wanted to comment in response to the language access that, uh, council and council staff have been working on that to try to work on that. I don't know exactly where we are, but that's a priority for us coming up in the next year, and we, I think we have some fun set aside, but there, there are a lot of language issues. The hard of hearing and deaf is one piece, but we are addressing it. I don't know how yet, so stay tuned for that.
Okay.
Council President, years ago, maybe it was like 10 years ago, I feel like we had some sort of hearing impaired system. Do we still, do we not, is that no longer active? Does anybody know?
We used to have it here and here.
Yeah. We'll find that out.
Well, we will explore, and we're, we're looking at council chambers, upgrades, things like that. Okay, Kim Schmidt.
I can plug in a USB, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Kim Schmidt from the Valley. That was obviously me that was just being talked about. I wasn't actually speaking about Will last week. I was speaking about one of his friends. So this is fine, though. So after nine months of harassment, doctored photos posted online, and other intimidation tactics that Huling's used both in person and online, a friend and I decided to petition the court in March 2020 for an anti-harassment order against him. He just read part of that order. Much of the harassment took place here at City Hall, and I'm hoping this is squashed today, because this is making everybody really uncomfortable and potentially in danger. Will decided to bring the legal proceedings back up to City Council two months ago, including my name, and I feel that it's only fair that I get to address what actually happened. I just wanted to show you real quick. I have some videos with the sound edited out, very short clips of what actually happened. I did it 10:24. I've been ready for a while now. Okay. I'm not sure why it's not playing. That's outside my know-how. It's just a standard USB. It's not even backing out. Okay, so anyways, basically, this first video is a, a video of him actually moving very quickly across the chamber and got immediately in my face, called me an F and Y B. The video I was taking at the time, he was so close that literally all you could see is his teeth. And this is after, like I said, months of harassment. When we showed up to court, former, a former city council member, Mike Fagan, actually showed up in support of him. Uh, Mike Fagan is known to be friends with the judge. When the judge went to his quarters for, to decide the, what his decision was gonna be, uh, Fagan disappeared and didn't come back. Um, this was also immediately before COVID happened. We were not able to appeal at that time, because the court shut down. Um, immediately after that court decision, um, part of it was, uh, I was threatened to be curb stomped. That is a violent action where somebody takes somebody's head, holds it to the curb, either kicks it or smashes it in with their foot, often resulting in death, more often than not resulting in some cracked, missing teeth, brain injuries. This is what we've been facing, like, every single Monday here. And it, please have it stop. I only bring this up because it keeps getting brought up, and I know that I, right now, am in violation of council rules, but please stop. The last time, I mean, I, they were waiting for me at the top of the stairs, calling names, followed me and a friend to my car, stood there taking pictures. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
And I have video online if anybody wants.
All right. That brings us to the end of our meeting tonight, and probably our last meeting of the year, although, uh, the mayor gets to consider, um, everything that we did, and she could veto something, a partial or full. The main concern would be if she does that on the budget, so I can't quite cancel Monday's meeting yet. But I want to thank everyone for the year together that we've had and all the hard work, and all the people who have engaged us in the public, most of whom are gone now, but that we've had hundreds and hundreds of people testify and share their perspectives with us. I want to thank Terry Pfister.
Yes.
She's the best.
Violating the rules for Terry, but I want to thank our individual staff members, uh, and LA's and central staff, and I, big thanks to Channel 5 up there for keeping us on the air and making us look good. Thanks to you all, and please...
Thanks to our security people as well.
Yep. Thanks to our police and security. Please, um, uh, enjoy any time with friends and family over the next few weeks, especially on, you have your Monday nights back, uh, hopefully for a while. Uh, and, um, take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. And, um, remember that in Spokane, we all belong. We're adjourned.
Hey, Cam.
Oh.